If everybody would have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Soto Longo, Dave Rosacker as vice chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum, chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, planning director, Eric England, assistant planning director, Mike Carter, current planning manager, Robert LaRocco, planning board administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower, recording secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And the only change we have, well, it's not really a change, but case number, agenda item number 12 has been withdrawn from the consent and will not be taken up today. So I'm going to get started with the consent cases. Okay, agenda item number five, case C3-23-43. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request approval of the 2023 Consolidated Action Plan, location, city of Omaha, and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number seven, case C10-23-22, C12-23-23. Applicant, Ryan Lindquist, Alcorn Public Schools. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Idapoint West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R5. Location, northwest of 196th Street and Stone Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eight, case C10-23-24, C12-23-25. Applicant, Ryan Lindquist, Alcorn Public Schools. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Iron Bluff South and final plat approval of Iron Bluff South Lot 1, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R5. The location, southeast of George B., Lake Parkway, and I Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nine, case C10-23-26, C12-23-27. Applicant, Signature Ernst Holdings LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Cherry Creek, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 538, street grading, along with rezoning from DR to R4, R5, and R6. Location, west of 103rd Street and Blair High Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C10-23-30, C12-23-31. Applicant, Steve Makitas. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Deer Creek Replat 26, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from DR and R4 to DR and R4. Location, 7361 North 122nd Avenue Circle. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C10-23-33. Applicant, Big O Auto LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location, 3217 North 90th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C10-16-287. Applicant, Jasper Stone, 192nd Dodge LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue 1. Location, southeast of 188th and Burke Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C10-12-179, C10-23-34. Applicant, Sullivan Development Company. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R8 to TOD 2MX with repeal of the ACI-1 area of civic importance overlay district. Location, 3612 Leavenworth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C10-23-40, C7-23-41. Applicant, John Peterson, Gospel Meeting Rooms, Inc. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DR to R4 with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 district. Location, 3215 North 168th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C11-23-35. Applicant, Signature Ernst Holdings LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a planned unit development overlay district. Location, west of 103rd Street and Blair High Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C8-11-83. Applicant, Gloria Pavelos. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow daycare services general in the R5 35 district. Location, 4102 and 4110 South 13th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C7-23-38. Applicant, Trek Design Group LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC district. Location, 19251 Grant Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C7-23-39. Applicant, Westwood Plaza Limited. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district. Location, 2809 South 125th Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C7-91-50. Applicant, Jeremy Moore, Scott Catholic High School. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the DR district. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, 3131 South 156th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. I think that's it. Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for approval?
I motion to approve agenda items number 7, 9, 11, 13, 14, 15, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Yes. Morris?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
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 Yes. Do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for layover?
Motion to layover cases 5 and 8.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, those cases that were on consent and left on consent, no further action will be taken on those cases today. If you were here for one of those cases, you are, you're free to stay or you're free to leave. It seems like every double check, because every time at the end of a meeting, not every time, but we usually have somebody that's sitting here that, where's my case? And it was voted on in the first 10 minutes. So you might want to take a minute to make sure your case was on consent and voted on. Before we get started with the agenda, we've received a lot of correspondence on agenda item number 3. That's with the airport. Can I see a raise of hands? How many people are here? Okay. Oh, a lot, okay. Here's what we're going to do, so that we can give you people the proper amount of time. We're going to move you, I'm sorry to say this, but we're going to move you to the end of the agenda. And we'll move through this fairly quickly, but we're going to move agenda item number 3. That'll be our last agenda for today. Okay? The first one is case, agenda item number 1. It's administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public testimony. So agenda item number 1, case C10-22-269, C12-22-270. Applicant, 156 Potter Villas LLC. Request final plat approval of the villas at Pine Creek Woods, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5. Location, southwest of 156th and Potter Streets. And Eric, you're up.
Yeah, so the preliminary plat was before the October Planning Board and approved by city council November 8th. There are two lots and two outlots for 36 potential town home units. The final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R5. Approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the two items in the report prior to city council.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve of the rezoning from AG to DR and R5 and approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the two conditions outlined in the report prior to forwarding the request on to city council for final action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Group 70.
Okay, agenda item number 2, case C10-23-13, C10-23-14, C12-23-15. Applicant, WD Investments 10 LLC. Request preliminary plat approval of Air at Blue Sage, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and R7. Approval of a neighborhood conservation and enhancement district on a portion of the site, along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district on a portion of the site. This was laid over from our January meeting. Location, southwest of 204th Street and Blue Sage Parkway. And Larry, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me also is Kyle Hasi of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. The property is located at the southwest corner of 204th and Blue Sage Parkway, so it's this area right in here. This is 204th Street, Blue Sage Parkway on the north side. It has a total of about 44 and 1/2 acres. Phase 1 is 37 acres, and that's shown here from just south of Shirley Street all the way north to Blue Sage Parkway. That's phase 1. Phase 2 is south of the proposed phase 1 property and will be developed at a later time. There's really no plans for that at this time. It's currently undeveloped. Future land use map with respect to this property designates it as low-density residential housing, which, as you all know, it's about 14 and 1/2 units per acre. This particular project that we'll see here in a little bit is at 9 units per acre, so it is low-density residential housing. There's a lot going on here with the site plan, so I won't get into the details on every little aspect of it. But if you have questions or if you want me to get into detail on any, you know, particular portion of it, I'd be happy to do so. But I don't necessarily want to go through all the parking counts and unit counts and everything else unless you'd want me to. But I'm prepared to do that if you'd like. So again, divided into 3 lots. You got Lot 1 here, which is north of Shirley. You got Lot 2, which is south of Shirley. And then you got the phase 2 property, which is Lot 3. So that is the preliminary plat. I think it's helpful to show kind of the zoning here, but the rezoning request is from AG to R5, I'm sorry, R6, R7, and DR with a NCE overlay district on lots 1 and 2, or phase 1, and an MCC overlay district with respect to Lot 3, which is the phase 2 property. The NCE, the reason for that particular designation is really to establish various site regulators within the development to allow what's being proposed here with the different types of housing units that you'll see here in a little bit. So that's, that's what we have. This, this map that's, I think, in your packet, but it's kind of helpful, kind of shows the different areas and the different conceptual types of housing that's being called for at this particular site. This area is the cottages. These are single-family detached type units. And I'll get into the, you know, counts and numbers of those as we go here, but I just kind of want to give you the overall kind of master plan and then get into the particulars with the actual site plan. So then you have the townhomes that are running up here on that color. And I'm not the best at colors, so I won't be able to tell you exactly what color that is, but in any event, it's kind of a brownish color. Those same townhome concepts are located here on the south side of the project as well. And then we have what we're calling direct access units. And these are two-story multifamily apartments in this area up here, and then also here and over here at this location. And I have, you know, kind of conceptual drawings and, and site plan that kind of shows in more detail those various areas. Then in the middle here, we have the duplex area. And I believe that that really is all of it. And then, of course, you have the open space area that you'll see here, which is a park. We'll talk about that later when I show you the site plan. Then there's also green space all along the western boundary of the property as well. So that's kind of the overall conceptual plan. There's 323 units total. And again, that's the density of 9 units per acre. So again, it constitutes low-density residential housing. So get to the more particular site plan. Again, like I said, there's, as you can see, there's a lot going on here with this particular development. And this shows the actual housing types. Again, with the townhomes here and here, the direct access units at these locations and along the western boundary, the cottages here, and then, of course, the duplexes in the middle. There are various amenities throughout the development. They have a clubhouse at this location with pickleball courts. There's a park area, which will have a grilling station, you know, kind of the typical amenities in this type of a project. There's a dog park being called for. There's the walking trails throughout the entire development. The pedestrian connectivity is important, and it works its way all the way through this particular development. There's playground areas, and there's obviously ample green space. You know, with this number of units being only 9 units per acre, there's a lot of green space with this particular development. As far as the this drawing, this is part of your packet as well. These are all private drives and private streets throughout the development. Shirley Street will be extended from the west development, which is Wingate Ranch, across the bridge and making that connection to 204th Street. So that improvement, public improvement, will be made with this particular project. All the other streets will be private plazas and courts, and there will be a public easement that will be granted to serve phase 2 in the future, so that we'll have access as well. Again, all the public improvements and private improvements as far as the drivelanes, et cetera, are being installed privately, paid for privately. This is not an SID. We did have a neighborhood meeting on January 19th. I think we had 5 or 6 people there, and, you know, I think it went pretty well. Actually, I think that more people were concerned about construction and the length of construction. But this is all going to be built, from what I understand, in one phase. So all of these units are going to come out of the ground at once. I think the proposed construction is about 2 years from start to finish. We've reviewed the recommendation report and find the same acceptable. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or get in more detail with respect to the site plan, the number of units, for example, the cottages, townhomes, duplexes, and the number of units in the, what we call the direct access units as well, if you'd like. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Additional comments or questions before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Yeah, I don't have much to add. Obviously, Larry presented a very detailed picture of the development, and we, and we spoke at length on many of those details in our pre-meeting. So just want to point out, the NCE plan will accompany the final plat to city council. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and R7. Approval of the NCE plan, subject to submission of an acceptable final NCE plan prior to forwarding to city council. Approval of the MCC overlay district on Lot 3. An approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the 15 conditions in the report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and R7. Approval of the NCE district plan, subject to submission of the acceptable final plan, prior to forwarding to the city council. Approval of the MCC overlay district on Lot 3. And approval of the preliminary plat for area at Blue Sage, subject to the 15 conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you, Eric. In case somebody just came in, we're going to skip 3. I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to move that to the last agenda item. We're going to move on to agenda item number 4. Case C3-20-244. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request approval of a major amendment to the 2021 Consolidated Action Plan. Location, city of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Greg, you're up.
Hey, Greg Paschkas, City of Omaha Planning Department. Thank you. Let me pull this up really quick. So yeah, we're requesting a substantial amendment to the 2021 consolidated annual action plan for home ARP funds. So these funds are part of the American Rescue Plan of 2021, allowing for homeless assistance and assisting other at-risk households, at risk of losing their home, at risk of being homeless. So the funds follow the traditional home formula, which is generally based off of housing characteristics and poverty level. The funds are available for us to expend through September 30th of 2030, and we have to have this allocation plan submitted to HUD by March 31st. This is a one-time funding award from HUD. And to give a sense of what this looks like for the Omaha Council Bluffs Consortium area, we're just shy of $8.2 million. So qualifying populations for how, you know, who we can serve with these funds, you can see are outlined here. Those listed in bold, homeless at risk of homelessness, and those fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking are what our plan is proposing as who we would be serving and use as a qualified population. So in support of some of this, we, there's a lot of data that was pulled together in the research of this, consultation with other organizations. But this is a good data point to take a look at. And so it's a point in time count over the past 10 years. So you can see during one evening every January, folks go out, take account of how many individuals are living on the street or sheltered, and they pull this together so we can see, you know, what our trends are. And you'll see there's a increase, increasing trend for unsheltered and increasing trend for those who are chronically homeless, which is important in terms of giving us an idea of where we should put our resources, where those greatest needs are at. And so in terms of how we can use these funds, again, there's four options here. Those in bold are the ones that we're proposing to pursue in our plan, and that is production or preservation of affordable housing. You know, if you want to help people have a place to live, we have to have enough units for, for people to live. We know there's a shortage of units available in the current marketplace, and that's a challenge. doing rehab to a property for that purpose, or building new. And again, we would target, based off available funds, roughly 22 units of non-congregate shelter being added. So here you can see, again, kind of those buckets in terms of uses, off to the left-hand side, along with the proposed funding amount, totaling us down to, excuse me, to 8.186 million. So you can, you can see what that breakout is. And the, the thinking, you know, again, was having some continuity with the supportive services. The non-congregate shelters, again, is a challenge to fund that. You don't have traditional housing funding resources available, so we want to make sure there's enough to really bring those units about while still making a good source available to help projects, bring, you know, dedicated units into the rental market that could support folks who are experiencing homelessness or at risk. And then the admin fee that's in there, and I will say the admin fee is for a course of, again, you can see, at least 15 years in addition to the planning that we're doing here and working through everything, so it's covering a very long time. Timeline, over the past year here or more, there's been consultation with stakeholders, those with lived experience of the service providers, going through a variety of meetings, doing the research to figure out what's really needed, what people really want, and how we should use these funds. Draft plan was made available here recently. Last week, we had a, a public meeting. We have a virtual public hearing next Thursday, the ninth, and we will take, you know, comments into consideration as the plan moves forward and work right to submit by March 31st. Request for proposals, once we have an allocation plan that HUD has approved, requests for proposals we put out, we're expecting that that would be made available in the summer of this year, with projects awarded by the end of the year. And we will pursue a second round of RFPs as needed in the event we don't have projects that meet, right, the needs we're looking at, at meeting and aligning with city priorities.
Have we received the funds?
Yes, my understanding is the funds we have been received. I can, oh wait, sorry. I'll let Nicole comment here.
Nicole Ingles, City of Omaha Planning. We received 5% of the funds, which is the 5% that can be used for planning and administration before the plan is approved by HUD. After the plan is approved by HUD, we'll receive the rest of them.
And just, again, just another financial question. So the money that's been earmarked or allocated here, according to your estimates here, is in today's dollars, but when will you, when will the projects start to occur, and do you think the money that's been allocated or received will cover the projects going forward?
Yeah, you're correct. It's a, it's, you know, point-in-time funding, so that's the amount that's been allocated and we receive it, that's what it will be in terms of, you know, if there's continuing inflationary pressures, right, construction costs, these things, yeah, that's going to impact potentially, right, the number of units that we could get created, right, using the assumptions we've made. Yeah.
Any additional questions?
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Greg. Thanks for your presentation in our pre-meeting, too. Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. Recommend approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Agenda item number six, case C twelve dash twenty-three dash eighteen, applicant Fred Tonic, request preliminary and final plat approval of Tonic Farms Number Two, a minor plat outside city limits, along with a waiver to section 5399 sidewalks. A portion of the property is located within an ED environmental resources overlay district. Location, southeast of Fani Road and Blair Eye Road. Looks like you're representing the applicant, Doug.
That's correct.
All right.
Were you going to read through? No?
Go ahead.
Doug, this is 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have regarding this case. The applicant is willing to comply with the conditions laid on the preliminary plat, and we humbly request your approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. Recommend approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Agenda item number six, case C twelve dash twenty-three dash eighteen, applicant Fred Tonic, request preliminary and final plat approval of Tonic Farms Number Two, a minor plat outside city limits, along with a waiver to section 5399 sidewalks. A portion of the property is located within an ED environmental resources overlay district. Location, southeast of Fani Road and Blair Eye Road. Looks like you're representing the applicant, Doug.
That's correct.
All right.
Were you going to read through? No?
Go ahead.
Doug, this is Streason 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have regarding this case. The applicant is willing to comply with the conditions laid on the preliminary plat, and we humbly request your approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing. Any comments, questions? Eric?
Doug, if you could just step up to the mic, please. So, obviously, I know, I know the answers to this, but I just want to put on the public record. The applicant wants to build a single-family home, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the plat before us is a requirement because ag zoning requires a 20-acre lot minimum, correct?
Yes.
And you need a platted lot for building permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's almost like a legal deal.
So, yeah, so this site, portions of it are within the Lake Cunningham Overlay District, and so the application did include the necessary impact study. We do have a comment in the report that with the dedication for right-of-way, that fence will either need to be removed or moved out of the right-of-way. When the applicant comes in for building permit, if he has desire to keep the current gravel drive to remain in place, he will need to seek a waiver from the zoning board of appeals. But I was just kind of reiterating, we're here because chapter 53 and chapter 55 require 20-acre platted lot minimums to receive building permits. Staff recommends approval of the waiver of section 5399 sidewalks, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the two conditions in the report, approval of the final plat subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the waiver to section 5399 sidewalks, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Agenda item number 10 and 16 will be taken together. Agenda item number 10, case C ten dash five dash two oh eight, C ten dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight, C twelve dash twenty-three dash twenty-nine, applicant Green Hall Investments LLC, request preliminary, preliminary plat approval of Roanoke Business Park replat four, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from DR GC and MU to DR and MU, along with approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Roanoke Business Park. Property is located within the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay Districts, location southwest of 120th and Fort Streets. And agenda item number 16, case number C ten dash five dash two oh eight, applicant Green Hall Investments LLC, request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Roanoke Business Park. Location, northwest of 120th Street and Roanoke Boulevard. And you're up.
Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself. Patrick Mulhall, the developer, is in the audience as well, is Brent Beller, representing land use attorney for the project. The project that we are discussing is on the southwest corner of 120th and Fort, as shown on, here on the exhibit. Existingly, existing right now on that corner was the Boone Dockers Bar and Grill and the Mulhalls Nursery Facility. We are requesting two items that we are requesting as items 10 and 16. We're asking for an indoor recreation use to be added to the existing mixed-use that was part of the Roanoke mixed-use agreements that occurs both sides of the road, as you can see here in purple. And then we are adding the hatched area as currently zone DR and part of the Mulhalls Nursery Facility, and then the Boone Dockers Lot that was there on the corner. With the new mixed-use plan, we are proposing to add land uses that include fast food use, a proposed hotel, retail, and then a restaurant concept that has part of the indoor rec as part of their program, programming, which is shown there at the bottom, that would be, thus the change in the mixed-use agreement. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions, counsel, or planning commission, board, or audience may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so we spent a good amount of time discussing this development proposal. You know, there's a few items, probably more specifically to agenda item 10 in that recommendation report. We'll need to continue to coordinate with the applicant regarding a few of the street widths, regarding the mixed-use requirements as far as planters and sidewalks, when there's, specifically on the southern end, where there's the diagonal on-street parking, and then also kind of the northern and the northwestern portion to make sure that that private street in that vicinity is located within the outlot and that we have the proper alignment, street width sections, and appropriate landscaping. So we'll need to continue conversations with the applicant regarding that issue. There are a few items as it relates to Fort Street. You know, it's, it's rather challenging. You have the large drainage way just west off of the, the screen there. You have the bridge that crosses that drainage way at Fort Street. So just some median modifications, some access comments that are in the report. If you do have questions, we do have public works available on those specific items. The expansion of about two and a half acres of mixed-use, the intersection does have those available mixed-use acres. They'll need to continue to coordinate overall mixed-use development agreement, both for this larger overall plan as well as for the southeastern lot, as we discussed. That is a platted mixed-use lot, and there are certain building rights, but as Kyle mentioned, we are adding that use type. So that is why there are the two agenda items on the agenda, both relating to a mixed-use major amendment. But with allowing number 16 to proceed, that is able to come in for a building permit quicker, just because that is a platted mixed-use lot, and we will make sure that all the protections are in place, to make sure that all the improvements that are associated with the plat have been finalized, and the plat's recorded, and those improvements have been put in. So unless you have any specific questions from planning or public works...
Do agenda item number 10 first?
Yes.
Okay.
Agenda item number 10, approval of the rezoning from DR GC and MU to DR and MU, subject to an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to city council, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 13 conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Remove approval of the rezoning from DR GC and MU to DR and MU, subject to submitting an acceptable major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding this request to city council, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 13 conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Okay, agenda item number 16.
Staff recommends approval of major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Roanoke Business Park, subject to acceptable agreement prior to city council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Remove approval of the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for the Roanoke Business Park, subject to submitting of the, of the, of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding the request on to city council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Agenda item number 18.
Thank you.
Case C eleven dash, thank you, Kyle. C eleven dash twenty-one dash two forty-five, applicant Jeff Lake, SRE Development, request approval of a major amendment to the planned unit development overlay district. Location, southeast of 177th and Francis Street. And Jeff, you're up.
Good afternoon, Jeff Lake, 21008 Cumberland Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. With me is Luke Weatherly from Olson Associates, as well as Rhonda DiStefano from Emmanuel. The item we have in front of you is a PUD amendment for what we're entitled Bloom at Lakeside. It is a project we're doing jointly with the Emmanuel Communities. You've seen a PUD in the past a couple of times here when we did the initial zoning of this. The item in front of you is a PUD amendment to address signage for this project, and I have to say, this might be the first time I've been in front of the board with a recommendation for denial, so a little bit of an unusual process for us. So I, I thought I might explain a little bit about the project and a little bit about the pathways that I believe the planning department has outlined for us for, the pathway for our signage. So, as I mentioned, Bloom at Lakeside is bounded by Francis Street on the north, Arbor Street on the south, 177th Street on the west, and on the east side is the balance of the Emmanuel Facility. In that facility has assisted living, independent living, and memory care aspects of the project. The west side is a first-stage housing project. It's age-restricted, and it's a unique development style that incorporates pocket homes, which is an alley-fed house with, instead of, in the front yard, a, a main street that's been replaced with the greenway, and that's to promote the movement of the, the residents throughout the, the neighborhood, to interact with not only the, the rest of their neighbors, but also the campus as a whole. It created a few challenges through the zoning process when you saw this the, the first time. We had to utilize a cluster subdivision to, to accommodate it, follow the infill and redevelopment guidelines, and also obtain a zoning board of appeals waiver for the driveway links. And then lastly, to accommodate, we had to place a PUD overlay over the project, all that to kind of bring this, this development to life. The PUD is, has created a few challenges with the signage. I want to show you the two different streets. This is Arbor Street. This is on the south side. From what was there originally, there was a Lakeside sign on the west side, which is the site of Bloom, which is the PUD. On the right side, there's a sign there as well, or, or up, I guess, a sister to it. it. Uh, the road had a center median, uh, through conversations with Public Works, we had to improve one hundred and seventy-fifth Street and remove the island and shrink the, uh, shrink the corridor of that road. Um, again, the signage that's out here is, is larger than what we have proposed here, uh, and also taller. I'm not quite sure how tall it was, but I'm six-four and it was above my head, so it's somewhere in the eight-foot, uh, tall range. Um, here is a blow-up of that intersection. What we have shown since we've removed the signage, um, from the left side, we've replaced it with a single sign on both to kind of mirror, uh, and frame that intersection. Uh, one of the, with the, the different use types, the important part of this campus to sort of announce the different areas. So we have the first-stage housing on the left side, we have the Emmanuel Campus on the right side, and I have a couple of, uh, images of the, uh, of the sign. This is the Bloom at Lakeside on the west side of it. Uh, the height of it as proposed for the, for the bulk of the sign is four feet nine inches, and on the highest sort of architectural feature of it on the left side is, uh, right at six feet. Um, we had a little difficulty figuring out how to put signage on this project, uh, with the PUD and being single-family housing, the solution on that is to view it as a neighborhood sign, uh, whereas on the east side of it is a different signage requirement, there's no PUD. Um, for example, the differences on the west side, the maximum height was five feet, on the east side, the maximum height was six feet, there's different square footages. Uh, we did, uh, submit, uh, both of these sides, uh, sides of the sign to the zoning board of appeals. I believe it will be on the agenda next Thursday, so that's kind of running simultaneous with this process. Um, just for reference, on the, the right side, so the Lakeside sign, there's a, a rendering of, of, of that sign. Uh, that is not part of the PUD and not before you, but I wanted to show just the differences in signage we have. Um, apologize, I know we have a long, uh, item behind us, so I'll try to move this along.
Jeff, just a second.
Yes.
Put that sign back up. How, how tall did you say that sign was?
This sign was roughly seven feet, so it was taller. It had another foot by, by guidelines, and that is also going to the zoning board of appeals, but not a part of what you've been asked to review in the PUD. Uh, so Francis Street, which is the, um, the, the campus is addressed oddly enough off of Francis Street, so this is quote-unquote "our main entrance." Uh, we had previously before work, we had a sign in the, uh, the center of that road. Again, with, uh, with comments from Public Works, we had to remove that and reduce the, the sections, so we had no signage. Um, hence our, our request here on this side, very similar. Um, in, in locations, we followed, I believe, the setbacks. The west side was based on sightlines, the right side was based on standard sign setbacks. I believe we've met all those. Um, and then these signs, due to topography, these were roughly one foot taller across the board, the site drops down in, and rather than raising it up or playing games with calling these retaining walls, uh, we had a little more height on the signs. The square footage of signage is the same of lettering. Uh, this sign is six feet four inches. Again, the codes say we had five feet, so we're a little taller, and the architectural feature on the end, um, was up to eight feet. And on the east side for reference, uh, on Francis was, uh, a little bit taller. That one was, uh, seven feet six inches tall. Again, this one will, not a part of the PUD, but, uh, will be to the city, um, zoning board of appeals next week. Um, so with that, um, a little on the process, we've met with the planning department, talked through this a couple of times. They said, "Come to, uh, planning board, submit to ZBA." We have a planning board hearing, then zoning board of appeals. Uh, when we received the recommendation letter, uh, I think I saw it last Friday, it was recommendation for denial, which kind of caught me a little off-guard. Um, I did request if we could lay this over to see the zoning board of appeals first, to see if they'd grant our waiver. Uh, I think, uh, Mike Carter mentioned that that's not the process in Forest, that you guys have to hear that first, so hence the reason why we're in front of you, uh, asking for approval, even though the recommendation was denial. Uh, with that, I know I've battled on here, happy to answer any questions or reshow any exhibits you might have questions on.
Jeff, can you modify the, the sign in order to comply?
Um, we could lower, so let me pull up the two different signs. So this is Francis Street, this is the taller of the two. This one is four inches taller. Sorry, one foot four inches taller on the, on the bulk of the sign and three feet on the very end, which is just really an architectural feature. So we could shrink it, getting with this location, with the, the roads and the grades dropping down into the site, that probably just promotes us, you know, putting it on a mound of dirt to get it up to, to height versus just adding a foot to the sign. And then on the, the, uh, Arbor Street one, um, we are in compliance with, uh, with the majority of the sign. This, this band of, of, um, Corten steel on the top there is at four feet nine inches, so we're only a foot taller on just the very end. So we could, it probably means we're, we're lopping off architectural features of it and, uh, having to lower the, the sign on Arbor or raise the grades.
But you have options?
We have options and kind of why we wanted to see where the zoning board of appeals, you know, how they felt about the sign and, and, uh, and signs, and if this, it was a, was a reasonable, um, waiver request, given kind of the campus. We're just, we really had a hard time fitting this whole project into codes, both from the zoning and also from the signage.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's, um, not a lot to this recommendation report. Staff feels that it's a design choice and they could comply, uh, so there's really no hardship or practical difficulty. Um, it is correct, when there is a PUD or there is a conditional use permit or special use permit, or a PUR, you know, a plan that is either approved by the planning board, as it would be the case with a conditional use permit, or if it was approved by City Council, would, by, you know, the PUD, PUR, special use permit, the process is, you know, if planning board does not support the waiver, they just can't go immediately to the zoning board of appeals. If there was a denial, um, just the code states out that, you know, a regular PUD, let's say this wasn't an amendment, but if it was a PUD, they still have the option to go to City Council. So, you know, with looking at Law Department, or they can jump in if, if they disagree, but, um, if the planning board denied today, the next step would be City Council, and if they were supportive of the waiver, they could defer it to the zoning board of appeals. But, um, you know, not basically, you know, skipping the planning board, just going to ZBA and back, back to this board. So, um, with that being said, staff recommends denial.
Just a, a question for you, Eric. Um, and I understand we, we have our standards and size. Jeff mentioned, they can shrink their signs, but then then they're going to put them on a, a mound of dirt, so they're still going to end up at the same elevation. Um, thoughts on that?
That is a quirk. There is a very prominent church sign along I six eighty that has done that for a number of years, so, um, you know, I don't...
I know, we, uh, where do we stop? But I, I got you. All right, any additional comments, questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
We'll deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove for denial.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks. Thank you, Jeff. All right, Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. Case C fourteen dash twenty-three dash forty-two. Uh, applicant, property owners, request approval of the vacation of the east-west alley ride avoid located between Cedar and Francis Streets, between Second and Fourth Street. Do we have the applicant here?
So we applied for the...
We're going to need your, your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Aaron Bartek, uh, four oh two Center Street. I represent, uh, some of the other owners that applied for the vacation, and one in particular who I'm doing an addition for, that backs up to the would-be abandoned alley, Dave Jensen. Um, so, all of the neighbors have been thinking about doing this for a while. It's an unused, unusable alley, uh, and it would add to their property a little bit. Uh, the reason we're interested in it is because it'd give it, give us just enough for, uh, additional green space to put a deck on the back of his house, once we complete the addition, uh, and that's the purpose of it.
Aaron, do you say you're representing, are, are you just representing that one house that you're doing the work on?
Yes, but we, we gathered all the people together and got them to sign these petitions.
Okay.
We organized it.
Do you, do you live on that street or no?
I live one block away. I live on Centers, Fourth and Center, and these guys run Fourth and Cedar, one block south. Um, so I'm in the neighborhood. Dave is a contractor and I'm a contractor. I'm putting up a three-story addition for him, uh, this spring, and, um, we got all that settled, and we, we have our permit, but we're a little short of, uh, ground for the, the deck on the back. He overlooks the botanical gardens. So that, that was the primary reason we went for it, but the other neighbors were in agreement.
Mike, did you have a question?
I was going to ask.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Aaron. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Greg, is, is the person that is, Aaron, is, is the, uh, person that you're doing the work for, are they here?
He's on his way, but I don't think he's going to make it. He's on his way here right now.
Okay. So, so on that, does he own the land past you?
He does. So there are a number of vacant lots in that area. A lot of the neighbors own one or two. He owns three, and it backs directly up to his property. The alley runs between his property and his three lots.
What does he have o- on the ground back there right now?
That is all garden.
Garden, is it a shed?
Uh, raised garden.
Looks like a building or, uh, or is it a shed back there or...
No. He had, he got a permit to build a garage, but that's up on his, uh, up on his property on Cedar.
Okay. Well, there's a structure on that, on that property.
I'm sorry?
There's a structure showing on our map anywhere on that property on the, on the back. Could be a tank or something. Fire pit back there?
There's a fire pit and now gar- gardens. They brought in topsoil and I think they're going to develop raised gardens. That property can't be built on either. There's a lot of fill in it.
So he got a permit to do a garage, but he's not going to do a garage?
No, we, he got a permit two years ago to build a garage and he's already built it. That's all said and done. We got permit this year for a three-story addition on his house, uh, that his garage sits next to, and we're all, we have the green light for that.
If I could jump in, Aaron. Um, do you have a plan that shows where this addition would sit? I mean, if you said you have an approved permit, then why are you vacating the alley?
The, the neighbors all had been thinking about doing it anyway, so we would vacate the alley. That would give us a few more feet for a deck to build on the, on the back end of the house, they headed south, overlooking the botanical garden. Right now, we, we got a variance to get right to the, the permit we have for the three-story addition, we have a variance to get right to that line, but we can't go past that line, so we can't build a deck. If the alley were vacated and he split that, we could.
Okay.
So that would be, the deck would be a future project and a separate permit.
Basically, the deck would be in the place of where the unimproved alley is right now.
That, well, wouldn't even get to it, but it would give us enough...
You just said the addition would go right up to the right-of-way line and that the deck would encroach into it.
So with the alley, with half the alley, that's enough for a deck in the future.
So...
Should this be approved?
Planning department was not supportive of this request at this time, based on the aerial photography and what was in that vacant lot adjacent to the south of the alley. Okay? It looks like there are a large grouping of potential concrete blocks, potentially a fire pit. I guess more alarming would be the white, white-roofed structure, and it's hard to tell what that is. It almost looks like a shipping container. Now, these aerial images, these are difficult. Obviously, they're a snapshot in time, so this is probably from March, but I did find it interesting that both from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two aerials, there was a skid loader that was basically parked in the alley. Um, so I guess, you know, hearing that the owner is a contractor as well, I'd be a little bit concerned about running a business out of a residential property. So, um, you know, I guess we can run through, I don't know if proponents and opponents have been called yet, but...
I, I do understand your concern with that. So Dave, last year purchased, um, uh, property, a commercial property on Saddle Creek. Uh, he bought, um, the building that Pyramid Roofing was in, and then they moved to Center Street. So that's where his op- business operates out of now. That Bobcat was probably for work around his house, but I'm not sure. But his, his business is that, what was Pyramid Roofing on Saddle Creek. He bought that building.
What is that white, white-roofed structure? Is that a...
I, can I, can I see what that is?
Yeah, Eric will bring it up to you.
Is that the person? That thing there? That must be a container. Yeah, that's a container.
Aaron, Aaron, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear.
I'm sorry, that's a container. Th- that's not there now. Right now, that's all gardens.
That's gone.
Yeah, that's gone, and all that block is gone, whatever that debris is. There is a fire pit, but it's more elaborate than that, and then raised gardens and open garden with topsoil.
Who, who, who all uses the gardens?
That's his property, he and his wife.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a community garden?
It's not a community garden, no.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are there, are there plans with the other neighbors that have, have agreed to vacate?
No, they just, they like having it as a buffer, actually, between them and the botanical garden. We, so we got seventy-five percent of all neighbors that abutted the alley to agree and sign petitions. I brought, um, the botanical garden petitions as well for each of their lots, because they own a few a- also, and they were too busy to deal with it. They're actually in a management shakeup and lots of things were going on, this got set aside. But I have no, I called and a- and asked if they had any, uh, reservations about doing that, and they said that they didn't. I said, "Well, it'd be nice if we could get a hundred percent and you'd sign the petitions," but they, I never got them.
I, I will, here in just a second. Any other questions for Aaron? Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
I already called for proponents, but are there any proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Okay?
Uh, yeah, hello, um, my name is John Newman and I'm the executive director at Lortz and Gardens.
Address, please.
Uh, one hundred Bancroft, Omaha, Nebraska. And, um, I guess, I have no reason to believe he does not have the seventy-five percent that he needs. I take issue when he said at the front end that all of the neighbors were a neighbor and we are not happy with this. Um, there is a long history with Dave, and, um, that predates me, I've been in the job about five years. If there's any way you can look into this and look at some history before you grant approval, um, this man has not been a good neighbor. Uh, I, I have to wonder about the circumstances under which he got seventy-five percent of the neighbors to agree to this. Um, my staff tells me there's a history of illegal dumping on his property. I believe there was some sort of legal action that, uh, predates me. I think you're wise to look at the debris that was on his property that he has now said has been removed. Um, the alleyway would be useful to us because we have a couple of parcels there, it just is another access for us to those parcels. So I just, I guess I just, if he's got seventy-five percent and the law is he gets the vacate, I just want to go on the record as saying the gardens oppose it.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Any other opponents? See none? Going to close the public hearing. Aaron, did you want to come up and address anything that John had to say? We'll give you the opportunity.
Name and address one more time, too.
Uh, Aaron Bartek with four oh two Center Street. So, right here I have all the petitions from all of his neighbors, signed and notarized.
When you say all of his neighbors...
Every, everyone that makes up seventy-five percent, which are...
Okay, all right.
I can give you a number. How many people?
No, that's okay.
Okay. All these, all these people did this because they're his friend. They weren't coerced, coerced into anything. Okay. All these, all these people did this because they're his friend. They weren't coerced, coerced into anything.
Okay.
So I wanted to make that clear.
All right. Is that it? Is that it there? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously you heard me express just planning department concerns about, you know, the aerial imagery. So I think we would, um, you know, continue on with our layover recommendation and need to have further conversations. I can say that we received exactly seventy-five percent of the, um, abutting properties. That makes up the lineal footage. So, um, I know planning staff even, uh, double-checked that. We received the information from Public Works, which had indicated that seventy-five percent. We also double-checked it with, um, the tools that we have available. And, um, the botanical gardens owns four of the seven parcels south of the alley. Um, so the, basically the other three parcels to the south and then everyone to the north had submitted documentation. So the, you know, it is the correct procedure asking, or being able to ask for the petition. But obviously, we are concerned about just activities that are taking place or if there's potentially a business being run out of this site. Or, you know, we don't want to sell or vacate our land, city land, if there's, you know, improper or illegal or whatever activities that shouldn't be taking place. So we would recommend layover and we continue to, we can continue to have conversations with the applicant and, um, you know, ensure that that site has been cleaned up and, and have further conversations. So staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove seven zero.
Okay, we're back to agenda item number three. Thank all of you that came for that agenda item to, for waiting around. Appreciate it. It's case C ten dash twenty-two dash three nineteen, C eight dash three dash eighty-nine, C eight dash twenty-two dash thirty-two. Applicant Patrick Ackerman, request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow aviation services in the AV district with approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow development of the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District, along with rezoning from DR and AV to AV. This was laid over from our January meeting. Location northeast of Seventy-second Street and Bennington Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah, Patrick Ackerman, one one nine oh one North Seventy-second Street. I'm the owner of the North Omaha Airport. Uh, first, I just wanted to thank the planning board. Uh, again, this is our third time in front of you and appreciate the dialogue and, and continuing dialogue with the City of Omaha planning staff. I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress so far, uh, throughout the process. Uh, I was pleased to see on the report, uh, the staff reiterate the plan complies with the goals and objectives of the Omaha Master Plan and that with an approval recommendation, uh, with conditions as part of that. Uh, since I shared the presentation last time, I thought I'd highlight just a few things since the last time we met versus going through that all again. Uh, as I committed to the, to the board last time, I would have a second neighborhood meeting, which we did have, um, in the middle of the month of January. Uh, we had about half as many folks as we did the first time during the conversation and wanted to highlight just a couple of dialogue components from, uh, that conversation.
Patrick, when you say half, how many were there? Would you say exactly?
There was forty people there.
Forty there this meeting?
Yes, correct. There was eighty the first time and, and forty this time. Yep, correct. Um, one of the ki- kind of detailed conversations, which, um, from the conversation that was brought up was around membership. Specifically, who could have a membership, who could not, who could have access, who could not. Um, and so I, I, I wanted to kind of touch on that just a little bit. Uh, the membership was put in place, uh, as per conversations with neighbors and the city in terms of concerns of access to the property and when they would do so. Uh, I've been consistent in my language in terms of this is for the aviation community, uh, and for those that have the intrigue of aviation. The aviation community is an open community and inclusive, uh, and looking for those that are wanting to have a career and inspiration around aviation. For those that have a general interest of learning more about aviation, they are welcomed, uh, in terms of this membership model. Uh, those, uh, is how we decided to go down this road, becoming a pilot career. Again, part of what we're here to do is inspire the next generation, uh, of pilots. Some of this language has put us a little bit in the middle of those that, uh, are in the community, live by the airport and they like airplanes, but they're not in the aviation community and, and they're concerned of, well, why can't I have access to, to the facility? And then on the reverse side of that, those that are concerned that this is used as a way to get more people and, and more open policies around those that are coming to use, uh, the airport. As I shared, the membership will be for the aviation community and those that have general interests, uh, to learn about aviation. So the second one that become a topic of conversation, though not related to, uh, the approval of this project is, um, the concern around air, uh, trees and airspace violations that, that are around the airspace. Uh, there's been a lot of discussions around, uh, why do we need to trim the trees? Why is it there? Uh, and so we had some conversations that part of those, clearing those is for safety purposes, uh, and also for us to get back into public use, uh, airport as well, which is with the state of Nebraska, which we continue to work with, uh, clearing violations around the airspace. Um, overall, I've been happy with the engagement. Um, I think of, of anything, we've, we've reached the, the community well for those that are both for the project and against the project, and I think that's been, uh, good to see both sides of that. We've, we've improved the project tremendously with feedback. Um, again, from the initial meeting on November thirtieth till now, we've incorporated a lot of things to, for the concerns that were as part of it from the neighbor's standpoint. Uh, lastly, I'm encouraged by the response of the pilot community, those that are both near and far. Uh, I've received calls and emails, texts from people, uh, around the region, uh, different states that are really excited about this project and what it does for general aviation to the Omaha area, uh, but to, to the surrounding areas. The project is to get more leisure pilots to fly and give them a place and a reason to fly. The more people that are flying, the safer our skies will be. It's also for inspiring the gener- next generation of those that wanna become pilots and, and, and starting a career around aviation. All of this is wrapped to keep in the airport, as an airport for the long-term sustainability and growing, uh, well into the future. Since nineteen forty-five, the airport has been an asset to the Omaha community and this project will keep the airport, uh, well into the future from that. So those are my comments. To start with, any questions?
Yeah, Patrick, I, I'm not saying I'm against your project here, but, you know, in our packet says the use of these facilities shall be restricted to the aviation community utilizing this airfield, airfield only and not available to the general community. Um, we were talking a little bit about that in our pre-meeting. How, how does the city monitor this? How do, how do we know it's not gonna be used as, uh, for the community to come? You're gonna have a, a bar there, a restaurant, seventy-six unit hotel room? I mean hotel, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the long-term plan. Again, we'll stage this until what, what meets it, yes.
I'm a little concerned about my, us, the city monitoring the use of this. And this may be a little further down the road, but since your hotel unit is, there's no city sewers out to this. So you gotta go a septic system on this. Have you checked in? Can you get a septic system to handle a seventy-six-room hotel?
Doug, do you wanna take that one?
Yes, Douglas Streason, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road. Um, most of what's up there is served by septic. The, we haven't run a percolation test per se at this point as the site plan's been moving around a little bit with the feedback from the neighbors. Um, given the data that we're aware of, of the existing systems that, that are up there, we're not concerned about the capacity of the septic to handle this project.
What if you have full occupancy in that?
What's that?
What if you have full occupancy in the hotels, in hotel rooms? And everyone's trying to run water at the same time? I mean, have you run any diagnostic or, or any kind of tests?
Well, we haven't done any of that yet as we're not.
You gotta know if it can handle it, if it's at capacity.
We can certainly do that. Um, obviously, we've gotta be able to provide enough water and sanitary sewer services to make the hotel work. I think that's a little further down the track.
And of course, you understand there is no permit without that, for, to build the hotel.
Correct, correct. We're, we're gonna have to perform all of those things in order to get a building permit. I think we're getting the cart a little bit ahead of the horse to run all of the calculations based on this and then find out, uh, we don't really want to approve that, that big of a project. And then, then we go back and do that stuff over. If that's the board's purview, we're, we're certainly willing to do that stuff.
Yeah, I've got a couple other questions to.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, are you done with?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, long-term, your plans are seventy-six hotel rooms. How many hangar spots?
Uh, there's twenty hotel spots, or, sorry, hotel spots. There's twenty hangar spots. It adds up to about thirty-eight thousand square foot of hangar space.
Why do you need seventy-six hotel rooms to accommodate twenty hangar spots? Assume each plane has been one, maybe two.
Well, most of the, yeah, sure. So, uh, so a lot of small planes have one or two seats. Uh, some of those actually have up to four or six seats, uh, that would accommodate single engines that fly in and out of there. So you could get people that, uh, fly in with a couple other business guests that want, that need two additional rooms. We built it really for one to three is the way that we looked at it in terms of that. And again, you know, the seventy-six rooms, that's the total space that we have up to. We might redesign some of that and say, "You know what? We don't need as many of those. We're gonna down to, let's say, sixty." But I wanted to make sure the board knew that was up to the capacity of that. We might have different room options. Those are things that we'll have to fine-tune as we get feedback from the pilot community. So I put seventy-six because it was, I wanted to be clear that there's capacity up to that for standard rooms, but that might not be the ultimate number that we end up with.
And what is your background?
My background is the Marriott Hotels. I spent more than a decade, uh, with Marriott International, uh, doing various things for the hotel industry, uh, analytics, finance, technology, hotel operations. Uh, that's my background.
So hospitality?
Hospitality, yes.
And, and you said this would be open to members?
Yep.
Define members for us.
Sure. So, uh, membership is for those in the aviation community and those that have the intrigue of aviation.
So I'm, I'm interested in flying, I'm a pilot, could I be a member?
I hope you would. I hope you'd come to an educational event to learn how to become a pilot.
So just about anybody could be a member?
I would say, I, I would say if you have a genuine interest of aviation, that's the focus. I wanna have people that wanna come and learn about aviation. That's, that's the goal here.
Would be open to just about anybody, though?
I disagree with that.
Well, anybody that's interested in flying.
I hope, I, again, I, I hope it's, it spurs people to become interested in aviation, yes.
So, uh, if, you know, again, I'm just, I'm just trying to lay the groundwork here.
Sure.
Assuming, I don't know, pick it up, forty percent of our community is interested in aviation. I don't know if that number is accurate or not, but it's a lot of people that could become a member of this and utilize the facility for whatever reason they might intend to use it for, parties, events, I suppose, right?
Uh, I, I think we've kind of talked about events. It's really meant to be aviation-focused. Uh, we're not there to, to have birthday parties necessarily. We're there to educate around aviation and bring social aspects to aviation. That's really what we're there to do.
You know what the cost is, membership?
Sorry.
Just one more, one more question for you.
Sure.
So I come from a little bit of a financial background. So I always look at things in terms of an ROI, right? It's gonna be a little bit costly for you. It already probably has been.
Sure.
Right? And you're making assumptions, which you need to make, and they're probably valid assumptions. But what happens if your assumptions become profitable, don't materialize, especially you don't get the ROI that you're looking for? What's gonna happen with the assumptions?
So the way we've looked at this project is to scale into it. We're not out here to build a seventy-six-room hotel to start with. It's not a field of dreams for, for me. This is meant to be built with, uh, with scales and layers to this that will allow us to, um, bring more people and get engaged for what this is. You know, part of this process, obviously, it's a long process, development process. It's gonna be multiple years until we can actually get a facility up and open, given the process. Um, and so, again, I'm not here to build a seventy-six-room hotel to start with. I'm gonna scale into this and find the right, uh, market for people that are looking for this experience.
And I get that, but how would you know on the front end what that scale should be on the front end of this thing? So how would you know?
We'll, we'll start the membership, uh, off first, likely with some kind of fuel, uh, package, uh, start getting activity and people coming in. Then we'll likely do some smaller events out there at our existing facilities. And again, kind of pre-sell our membership to get a gauge of where we are. We're not gonna greenlight any facility until we have, for comfort, in terms of those that would support this facility.
I might have some more questions to ask.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for your questions.
Thanks, Pat. Um, what do you anticipate the cost of a membership to be? Are there tiers? And you mentioned something about fuel incentive or something. Can you explain a little bit about what it takes to be a member in terms of those costs?
Yeah, sure. Uh, we've, we've been playing around with this a lot. Uh, we're looking for a few hundred dollars a month in terms of a membership as likely where it's, where it's gonna be. Uh, there'll be tiers to that, but likely it could be national membership and, uh, local memberships with tiers that might include different, um, different amenities. Again, similar to a golf country club, uh, there's kind of the standard membership and then there might be pieces to that that you get additional access to. So as I talk about fuel membership, uh, one way to, to get activity is to offer lower fuel costs for those that are members. Um, and so that's a way to, to generate activity and that's a starting point for us. Then we have additional layers we'll put in there around events and, and access to things that we would hopefully add in later. Does that help?
Yeah, and I, and I think, um, the clarity that I, I guess I'm trying to get and is, you know, what's the barrier to entry to be a member so that we can then extrapolate and think, how many people are actually gonna be participating in this? And does it sort of start to become a commercial retail type of, um, facility where, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that seems that that type of activity is not supported by the zoning? Eric, do you wanna maybe give some color to, or clarify anything I just said about?
I can get to that later, probably. Um, I think. I think I, Pat knows probably what you're.
Sure, that's all I have to.
Sure, yeah. Thank, thank you for your questions.
So you mentioned, uh, local memberships and national memberships. Um, I mean, can you kind of weigh in what the differences are and different costs? And how many ultimate members do you want to have?
Sure. So, um, the national memberships are those that are looking to pre-buy, uh, room packages or experiences, uh, into the Omaha area. That's the way I look at national memberships. Those are coming for a long weekend, uh, or for a week event or things like that. Those are, those would be more feasible than the local memberships that would be using it more actively on a regular basis. Um, you know, in terms of membership, we're likely at four or five hundred in the local membership and likely into the thou- into, like to say, a thousand national members is the way we've looked at it initially, um, for the facility.
And so it's all on, it's on a monthly payment? They don't buy in or anything like that?
Yeah, it's a monthly, yep.
As Jorge mentioned, there's, there's several, uh, zoning requirements for, to operate a safe airport. And I think Eric's gonna touch on this a little bit. You probably have read the recommendations as well. So what are you gonna do to address those zoning requirements, uh, that you're trying to get this done?
Yeah, so we continue to dialogue with, with Eric and team. Uh, the planning staff is the Airport Zoning Commission. Uh, we have to work through them to clear any, uh, violations. Majority of the violations, I believe seventy percent or more than two-thirds, are actually tree violations. Those are trees that grow too tall into the airspace, uh, around the, uh, around the airport. And so those need to be cleared with working with the neighbors, uh, and, and the Omaha, uh, planning staff to, to get those cleared up. Uh, in terms of other, um, things that need to be cleared up around the airport, we're fully committed to doing that. Uh, I want a commitment, uh, you know, that this kind of project is, is gonna be, uh, approved by, uh, your guys', your, your board and city council before putting a lot more money into the airport uh, because, uh, this is the path to getting the airport sustainable, uh, longer term, in my opinion.
Which quite honestly is my biggest concern, is sustainability of, of it, if it, if, if it doesn't materialize the way you hope it does.
Sure.
And then what are we left with?
Sure, which is again, why we're, yeah, why my focus is around scalability, uh, of this. You know, I think, I think many people that are not in the pilot community don't understand the size of the aviation community at large. In Omaha area, we have over twelve hundred people with pilot's licenses. In the state of Nebraska, we have over twenty-five hundred registered planes. We have, within the seven-state radius, there's sep- there's fifty thousand pilot's licenses and twenty thousand registered airplanes. You know, I think, and, and just from people I've heard from that are excited about this project, this, this span's a lot bigger, I think, than people realize the size of the community that exists around aviation. And again, hopefully we grow that because many people in this room that take vacations, we need pilots into the future. And, and people that learn at airports like North Omaha are the ones that become airport, airplane pilots into the future, and that's part of the vision.
So Patrick, um, you said maybe a thousand national members is what you, you would hope for?
Sure.
Five hundred local members?
Sure.
Um, with, with five hundred local members, would they have all the, the same access to everything? Or is that more of just you, the, the bar, restaurant, uh, kind of access and the, and the simulators and, and those kind of things? Um, or, or are they kind of full-fledged members even though they're, same thing that national would get? And then also you said something about if, uh, somebody flew in and had three or four guests with them on the plane, do they have to become members to stay at that hotel? Or because the, the, uh, member that flew them in, they, they get to bring whoever they want in for that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I mean, my initial thought is, again, similar to a country club, you have one member, has guests, and that's the way that we would, we would manage that, um, from that standpoint. Your first question, I'm sorry, I've, I've already.
Local members and?
Oh, yeah. Um, so in terms of access, again, still preliminary in terms of what membership looks like and all the tiers and the layers and what it gets access to. I think it also depends on, you know, the final state of what gets, gets approved. Um, you know, we're gonna have spaces to have amenities. We've, we've had ideas around amenities, but we're getting feedback from the pilot community of what they like, what they don't like, and some of those amenities are gonna change. And so I think the membership model will change with that as well.
At, at a country club, though, they limit the amount of people that can use the, the course or the facilities because that's what makes it special.
Yep.
This doesn't sound like it's got any limitations. You could have a thousand local members possibly and be, be, having people come up to the restaurant or the bar to use that facility. And, and again, you're in the hospitality business. Is, is there going to be any limitation on the number of people that you will, you will accept?
Yeah, I, I think there needs to be. I mean, again, this is similar to a country club style, and it's a better experience for those that are, that are lower number of people playing than, than a high number. And we have to find a balance of that for this, this actual facility that we'll be able to support.
Thank you.
So, you mentioned, you know, like trimming the trees and stuff like that. And when that airport, and I'm not, I don't know the details of all of that. It's been twenty-seven years since I am interested in an airplane, but it is a narrow, it's a narrow airstrip, and some of those things can't really be improved to go to a, a public ride. So, it's going to have to stay a private airstrip, right?
Not necessarily, no. Not per my conversations with the state of Nebraska. There's pieces that can be cleaned up that can get us back to public use again. I think the, you know, as an example, you mentioned the runway. The runway was approved to be, to be widened back in the two thousand and four submittal. So, that's, that's approved to be done. And certainly, again, in terms of things that we do and focus on, getting back to public use, those are options that we can clean up in the future.
Pat, the report doesn't talk much about the existing violations or that have been out there. So, I don't want to get too off course, but because you have brought it up a few times and I did have conversations with a member of your team this week, and, and I still have some questions. I know department staff. So, I think, I think it's appropriate. You said shortly ago that you would like to clear up the safety violations for safety issues and get back to public use. So, that was, that was kind of my, my question, and it is today. Can you expand upon that a bit of just about the private use and the, trying to get the public use designation back from the state? Or how would you categorize the priority or what you view as necessary or why you want to clear up violations? If you could just touch on that?
Sure. Cleaning up the violations creates a safer environment around the airfield. As an example, we're, we are going to extend the runway about four hundred feet. There's no other purpose than safety in doing that. I'm not extending my RPZ zone or anything. That's additional buffer for, for people flying in and out of, of the airport. And so, my primary goal around cleaning up those violations is, is safety for those that operate around, in, in and around the airport.
But are you concerned because you're in violation with city of Omaha or because you're trying to get public funding from the state of Nebraska to help with the runway? And to do so, you need to clear up the violations?
I would say number one is the city of Omaha's zoning enforcement that we're, we're after to clean that up, which allows us to get back to public use. So, I think it's two, it's two parts to that. Does that help? Type, help?
Sort of. Thanks.
Hey, Pat, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not an aviator. When you extend that runway for safety, does that allow you to bring in larger aircraft?
It does not, no. It's, it's perfectly for, purposely for the safety of those that are taking off to the south and those landing to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, Pat, is there, is there any reason why you have to do all of this? The, like, country club model and the hotel to be successful? Can you just clean the airport up and extend the runway and add some nice hangars and have a successful airport?
Could. The ROI is, is, is negative for those numbers, and so, we need something else that creates additional activity to keep the airport sustainable and paying the bills. Running an airport's not cheap, and there are a lot of pieces that go into that. And so, there's, in, in my opinion, this is what's needed to keep it sustainable longer term.
Okay. So, does that model not work at the Millard Airport? Because they don't have all of this stuff, do they?
No, no. They're, again, what's at Millard is what's at Millard. There's, you know, I'm trying to take a different approach to aviation. Again, twofold. One is getting pilots fly more. I do think that part of the model at North Omaha is not to get a bunch of fancy storage that people park their planes in, and they just keep them there. The goal is to find a place to actually fly to. You know, pilots that are in the community having a location to fly in and out of just to get a burger or food or some entertainment, it's actually really difficult to do. And so, that's, that's part of the model as well, so.
You good, Patrick?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Are there, are there any others, any other proponents that want to speak? How many proponents are wishing to speak? If you could hold up your hands.
Come down.
Yeah, come on down front, if you would. Take a seat here in the front row. And I'm going to remind you, we need your name and address and number one. And number two, we need new information. Patrick covered a lot of information. If you have new information, we would appreciate it.
Dawn Van Sloan, six eight, six six Willow Street. I am one of the residents that is within three hundred feet of the property. My husband and I chose our lot specifically for its location. Seeing the traffic, the air traffic back in twenty eighteen, what it was, we can't get to our windows fast enough to see the planes. Unfortunately, a couple houses have been built now block the view, but that's besides the point. We miss the air traffic. Pat, I've only met him twice. Today is my second time. He's like my new best friend because these plans are going to bring potentially that air traffic back. And that's what we, my husband and I, really, really want. Let's see. We miss the helicopter traffic, which is long gone, and that's part of the air traffic that was two thousand and eighteen, included that helicopter. So, if there's issues regarding the traffic being the helicopter, that's, that's gone. Who knows what potentially the, the air traffic will be, but we're hoping that it will get to the levels that it was. In order to strengthen and improve the current condition and get a return on of his investment, he has to be able to do plans such as this. I wish, I hope, not being a pilot, husband's not a pilot, we have a sincere interest and love of aviation. I wear titanium wood, I'm sorry, I wear a titanium wedding band. We love aviation. I've jumped out of an airplane. I can't keep my husband away from looking at videos about airplanes, guitars. I just, I, we really support the idea of the improvements that Pat has, and that's really the gist of it. I appreciate your time and having this open forum, and go, Pat.
Thank you.
A question for you.
Oh, sure.
First of all, why would you jump off a perfectly beautiful?
Everybody asks me that. The view is beautiful and I trust the pilot.
You don't have him anymore.
The other question would be to my husband, why he would allow his new bride to do that, so.
One other question, though. Are you planning to become a member?
Well, if you'll let me, yeah. Sure, I would love to. Now, I don't have a desire to get my pilot's license. I have vertigo. So, I have to take a medication to even think about getting on an airplane. But if I'm going to be limited to who gets to be a member, that's, that really needs to, you know, be at the heart of this. I want to be a member, but the definition still needs to be answered.
Thank you, Dawn. Any other proponents?
I am Clarence Devini. I live at thirteen twenty-eight South one hundred and sixty-third Street, Omaha, six eight, one three zero. Just a little background on me. I earned my pilot certificate in nineteen seventy-four. I flew out of South Omaha Airport, and when it closed, I moved to Millard Airport. From there, I moved to North Omaha Airport, back to Millard, and then back to North Omaha about two years ago. In the seventies, when I first started flying, there was one-fifth of one percent of the population in the United States were pilots. Today, it's still below one percent. When considering an aviation career, it is important that, to remember that it is not an easy field to break into. There are many challenges that pilots face on a daily basis, and it can be different, difficult to obtain the experience required to become a pilot with most airlines. It all starts with the private pilot certificate, and that is where a destination airport, such as what Pat's working toward, is important. General aviation has struggled over the years, and this could be very beneficial, not only to aviation, but to the entire Omaha area. The airlines are short on pilots, and this could very well contribute to the situation and also give, give us private pilots a place to congregate and enjoy the sport of flying. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Hello, my name is Mark Farrell, and I live at one two four zero four North Sixty-ninth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight, one five two. I spoke last month to you guys about my support of the project, and I just wanted to voice that again for the record. And from the standpoint of a pilot that is seeing what Pat is doing, I, I can see nothing but positives from it. It's, it's a place for other pilots to go to congregate. My experience with aviation started when I was about ten years old by my parents taking me to the airport when they had an open house. And I was able to walk amongst the airplanes and actually go for an airplane ride by someone there offering rides. And I, I think it was my first step to something that has become an avocation for me. I didn't grow up around aircraft, but I had opportunities to get my pilot's license and, and fly from different airports. And when I finally decided on the North Omaha Airport as a destination airport for me to, to base, it's like a coming home. You know, I've, I've flown out of Millard, I've flown out of Epley, and actually even flown out of South Omaha when it was still an airport. And there's just, there's a hominess to where you hang your hat, basically. In North Omaha, it, it has that feeling for, for aviators. It's, it's, it's not a big airport. It's a small airport, but it has a very, very homey feeling. It was a very busy airport when I first started going there twenty-five, thirty years ago. And I'd really like to see it kind of advance and, and, and take off again, if you will. And I think by some of the restrictions, it kind of eliminates maybe some of the people from experiencing aviation. And I want to say that really wholeheartedly, and because I, I don't think some of the people from the outside area don't really understand aviation to see what's happening there. It's, it's not a, you know, a violation of a noise ordinance or too many people or, or too many airplanes because general aviation just isn't that way. You know, I mean, on a good day, when there's a, a fly-in breakfast at, say, York or Crete, you know, there's a dozen, two dozen airplanes that fly in. And aircraft operation is very, very safe. You know, even the federal aviation regulations state that before every flight, me as a pilot in command, I need to do certain things to even do the flight. And number one is, you look at the airport where you're going to go, you look at the destinations, you look at, is my airplane safe enough to fly there and land there in this support structure that's there? Does it support me? So, that's, that's a regulation that we follow. And I think, you know, the safety factor of that is built into the FARs. But I think the neighborhood, if they realize, you know, that the safety of pilots and, and what the current owner is wanting to do, I, I think they would be a little bit more open to, to participating and possibly being, being members. So, I kind of want you to look at those restrictions as being a little harsh, I think.
Mark, you didn't, you didn't say you want to see it take off, did you? No more puns.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Any other proponents? Sure. Name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Stilinski, one thirty fifteen Heavenly Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. Okay, so I, this summer started working for Mr. Ackerman out of North Omaha Airport. I got my private pilot's license, my seventeenth birthday, last May of two thousand and twenty-two. And ever since, I have liked to see, I've just loved and continued to grow my passion for aviation and continue to gain more experience and continue my aeronautical ratings. So, part of what I've done throughout the last three years that I've been in aviation is speaking with other people and meeting other people. And absolutely everyone that I have met outside of this room, not here today, has been in support and excited about this idea. This is very innovative and exciting for all pilots of all skill levels, right? It's a, it's an approach to aviation that has not been done yet before. During training, which I went through summer of two thousand and twenty-one, part of what pilots have to do are called cross-country flying. And those are flights greater than fifty miles. And as you continue to get up in more advanced certificates towards a commercial pilot certificate, you have to make those distances that you're flying longer, for instance, two hundred and fifty nautical miles. What I've seen, and some of the suggestions that I've seen, are everyone who has to go through those processes, instead of just making it a boring stop, 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 come back to home base, you can make this a multi-day trip where you're able to fly into this destination, stay with the amenities overnight, have a bite teeth at the restaurant, play golf simulators, whatever it be, and then come back and fulfill that training requirement all at the same time. So, it's a very innovative approach that's not been done before, and it's something that's exciting for all. Overall, this, I believe this idea encourages a lot of people to fly. This provides, at least for me, a tool to share my passion and love for aviation with others. And I think this is a really good grow, or idea to grow Omaha and to help aviation succeed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask, how many people want to speak in opposition to this? Do you want to raise your hands? Okay, do you want to come on down? Can we get the proponents to move back and we'll get the opponents to come on down to the front? I'm going to give you the same directions as the proponents. Please give us your name and address, and please give us new information, each of you, so.
All right.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Landfair. My address is seventy thirty Bennington Road. I am directly east and adjacent to the North Omaha Airport and moved there approximately five years ago. I have questions that are brought forth to me from some neighbors who have not been able to make it. I will pull those forward to you, and then in the end, I will pull mine forward and let you know which ones those are. Below is a culmination of neighbors who couldn't make it. Number one, and there's nine. Number one, neighbors farther than the minimum three-foot notification rule were not notified. This person lives within walking distance but only heard from word of mouth, TV, and newspaper. They have no idea of specifics at this time and are nervous. Number two, neighbor would like detailed explanation of membership rules. At the neighborhood meetings, people think they can use the facilities. The second planning board meeting, one of the members of the board stated it must be a membership status. At the second neighborhood meeting that you requested, Pat, hold again, Mr. Ackerman's specific answer to gaining membership access to the general public, the answer was, all you need to do is state that you have an aviation interest. This person is worried, who and how will this be patrolled? You have the general public mixing with aircraft and alcohol and bringing them into neighborhoods. Number three, both neighborhood meetings, people asked to see or share a business plan if one existed. The question goes and remains unanswered. Another concern is the, the management or Mr. Ackerman has worked at a reservation center, not specifically running day-to-day operations at a physical hotel as a general manager, marketing person, or a front desk person. Recently obtained a pilot's license within the last one to two years. The lack of the background for both is a major concern to this person because this is a huge project. Not being presented are numbers. This is how we will make the dollars to be sustainable, as he states it must. If the following numbers that I will state equate sustainability, this all becomes very questionable. Seventy-five proposed hotel rooms times three hundred and sixty-five nights a year are twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five total room nights achieving one hundred percent occupancy. Half of that is thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven total room nights achieving a fifty percent occupancy. Broken down to a monthly period, that means it is necessary to book one thousand, one hundred, forty room nights to achieve fifty percent occupancy. Broken down farther, that equates to thirty-eight pilots booking one room per night flying to Omaha to enjoy a bar, restaurant, hotel, spa, gaming venue. And when this person consulted area hotels. And when this person consulted area hotels, an average occupancy of 75% retains sustainability. It's unfathomable to comprehend this many pilots willing to pay $250 per night, the proposed rate. In the second board meeting, Mr. Ackerman states that there will be a cook-on-duty, there will not be a cook-on-duty, full-time basis. Has this model ever been given any thought? The next person, number five, the North Omaha Airport has a short and narrow runway. The shortest and most narrow in all of the surrounding areas, and only possesses the capability for pilots to land in a visual mode. This prohibits landing in inclement weather or darkness. Number six, each meeting, the plan changes, less emphasis becoming on the airport and making it up to standards and safe. More on the venue of the restaurant, bar, spa, hotel, gaming venue. It's now 13,000 square feet of meeting space. As the planning board specifically stated in their last meeting, members, membership only, how, why does the attraction venue of this plan keep growing? As neighbors, will we ever be communicated to, or is it still going to be the existing word of mouth? Number seven, the plan proposes additional air traffic. The North Omaha Airport is only 36 acres. It's adding a hotel, hangar, bar, restaurant, spa, gaming area of approximately 13,000 square feet, along with homes that are ready, an FAA violation being too close to proximity of the airport. This is all too close and dangerous. Millard has 165 acres, Blair 306 acres, Council Bluffs 656 acres, Epley 2,650. These airports allow for a buffer for pilots to make an emergency landing. The North Omaha Airport has an extremely dense population of homes completely surrounding it. This plan has used up all of the airport space for the emergency landings for an entertainment venue. There is no room. Number eight, the North Omaha Airport has several violations against it. That's why it is now termed a private airport, as FAA and Nebraska Department of Aeronautics have terminated their association. Yet hopefully, a city would disregard, hopefully, a city would not disregard the federal and state institutions who state it as dangerous. Two homes built within the last five years have encroached too closely to the safe airspace. If this plan is approved, the restaurant, bar, hotel, game, spa venue will make the space even tighter and closer to that runway space. The space is too tight, and then add all of the dense housing already surrounding it. Number nine, and last, from neighbors, fire safety. How will this be handled? You have aircraft with highly toxic fuel lying next to each other, next to an adjoining restaurant and a bar, next to adjoining neighborhoods. What happens if someone simply throws down a cigarette? Number 10 begins my personal comments. This plan has drainage that goes into our land that we harvest. The aviation fuel has lead contaminants, and I do know that TD2 has shared with us that they do have a straining system, but we're not sure if lead can be strained through that system. The only way we found out that it was being drained into ours is my husband blew up the plans, and he could see a fine line and figured out it was the drain. We appreciate the setbacks that you had given us from the very first meeting, where the initial were 10 feet from our property. Thank you for that. One of the other questions, will our well water be contaminated and/or will it be depleted? What about the neighbors as well? Lastly, widening Bennington Road means it affects all of us as residents, our properties, and our values. There are an area of homes where the utility lines all run through there. Will all those have to be moved, and will that be at a taxpayer expense? This all is going to drop out onto 69th Street, which then drops out onto State Highway 36 with no stoplight. So we're having traffic from people dump straight out onto the state highway. Lastly, in summation, I'd like to focus on the zoning codes. Section 55-545 of the Omaha Municipal Code states aviation zoning allows for the operation of commercial facilities, which are accessory to the operation of the airport and provide direct services to its users. Such uses may include, but are not limited to, financial services, personal services, general retail, restaurants, cocktail lounges, service stations. The intent of the aviation code is to provide commercial passengers of scheduled airlines, conveniences of food and drinks between arrival at the airport and the departing flights. This is not their primary reason for using the airport, but instead, it is an accessory. In fact, most of the services are only available to ticketed passengers. The North Omaha Airport does not offer scheduled flights to passengers and intends to use this accessory zoning options for its primary function for income. The primary land use being the airport and accessory hotel, bar, restaurant, rules are being reversed in this proposal. The skewed view can be seen in two ways. One, number of employees for hotel is 15, but airport is only one. Two, prioritizing things like virtual golf and a spa, restaurant bar for the hotel, above resolving airport safety violations, while also removing any potential for widening of the runway by placing a septic field directly adjacent to the runway. And Mr. Friend, our council, our county representative, had to leave, but he said he will weigh in with you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other opponents?
You said opponents?
Opponents.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Opponents, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
I'm going to remind you, Kathy covered a lot of errors.
I know she did, and she's going to ruin some of my thunder. I apologize, but I was working while she was reiterating some of the stuff we talked about. So I may end up repeating some of it. I apologize. Let me first start off by saying, I too am a pilot. Oh, sorry. I live at the same place she does, 7030 Bennington Road. And my name is Dan Lanfair. I too am a pilot. I've been a pilot for 36 years. I've had a lot of experiences flying around the country into famous places like Oshkosh, Wisconsin, for their annual fly-in. That is an event. This particular place is not going to ever see that sort of level of curiosity nor entertainment. I want to, first of all, say, I really do want it to stay as an airport, but I do not think that it's viable in the plans that Pat has put forth. Let me go back to my wording here. Normally, the word "private" usually describes something that is exclusive or privileged. That is not the case here. It instead is a very negative connotation, meaning it has no longer deemed safe for the general public or public use. Private-use airports, like North Omaha Airport, are closed to the general public. When the FAA and state agencies jointly demote an airport from the public use to private use is an enforcement action, like the same, the city enforcement code violations. Just as the city provided the owners of the legacy crossing apartments ample notice and fix violations before they were forced to relocate residents, the same notice was given to the owners of the North Omaha Airport, to resolve those identified by the FAA infractions before it was recently removed as a public-use airport. Both instances are, the property is no longer usable by the public because of safety concerns. If approved, these waivers would only allow Mr. Ackerman to add more FAA infractions on those he already has accrued, further distancing the ability to ever use this as a public-use airport. The proper steps should be to prioritize resolving the infractions and returning the airport to public use before any waivers are granted. Mr. Ackerman is trying to put the horse before the cart. Mr. Ackerman keeps referencing a similar model of hotel in Texas to simulate what he's trying to do. Let me give you some examples and comparisons of these two airports. The airport in Texas, identifier T82, is a public-use airport, open to the public, with multiple instrument approaches, allowing people to, allow pilots to land in inclement weather, and has 70-foot wide runway by 51 feet long. It's sitting on 216 acres, and it offers an abundance of critical pilot services and how seven jet aircraft on the field. North Omaha has been demoted to the private-use airport, as is stated, having no instrument approaches, the narrowest and shortest of any in the vicinity, actually is a relatively poor shit, and sits on a meager 36 acres with no services to pilots to fly in. One of the, so Millard Airport, for example, is 75 feet wide by 380 feet long. Epley is 150 feet wide by 9500 feet long, and Blair is 100 by 42. Council Bluffs is 100 by 55. These are some of the airports in the local vicinity, as opposed to the 40-foot wide runway. In Mr. Ackerman's latest design, you see that there is a septic field located directly to the east side of the runway. That will prevent him from ever expanding that runway, to widening the runway. Although he just stated a few minutes ago that he intend, that he planned on doing that, he has not done that. The lower number of, and Mr. Ackerman's true intentions are to get back to the same airport utilizations numbers in 2018. He just needs to turn the service, return the airport back to some of the services that were provided back at that time. The lower number of aircraft using the airport is directly proportional to the number of services provided to the pilots. As it, currently, no service is available, there are no pilots using the field. Mr. Ackerman has made a decision to artificially drive the airport usage down to zero by removing any and all airport services. Even the gentleman who came up here and spoke with you doesn't buy his fuel there to fly his own airplane on the field, because there is none available. Two years ago, a pilot experiencing engine failure during takeoff and tried to make it back to the North Omaha Airport crashed between my outbuilding and the hangars nearby. The pilot stated that he thought he was going to crash into the hangars, but barely made it over them before stalling and crashing abruptly nose-down just on the other side of the hangars, then sliding backwards into the, into my fence line. If that exact same forced landing scenario happens again, and the proposed building now over 50% higher, everyone within Pat's new restaurant, bar, would have their lives turned upside-down or worse as the aircraft crashed through the ceiling spraying high octane fuel throughout the occupants. Off-site landings are directly proportional to the number of flights that occur. The more flights, the more accidents. This is why it is important that safety considerations be at the top of the list, above everything Granting such a request is allowing Mr. Ackerman to jeopardize the lives of those inside the hangar, hotel, restaurant, bar, being so close to an airport with no options for pilots when a forced landing off the field. And bad enough that the safety of the airport is already compromised with the safety violations, but pilots take that risk, knowing upon themselves the general public does not recognize those risks, and depend on their local planning boards not to place them in harm's way as they sleep in a hotel or relax in a restaurant bar. Through the lack of adequate airport land, nearby expanding residential housing and surrounding hilly terrain, the North Omaha Airport has the most restrictive options for pilots to return to the field when an engine failure occurs. Unknowingly, this plan is creating the perfect storm, allowing pilots easy access to alcohol, unchecked controls to police the issues, followed by the toughest, most limited options of the surrounding airports for an off-field landing. Ask yourself why the other airports nearby don't allow these options. The one word is safety. The North Omaha Airport has had a long history in the community, and I wish it to remain an airport. But the proposal to living, add living quarters and community gatherings in such close proximity to the airport, all removed from their published list of available airports in Nebraska because of the abundance of perpetual FAA violations and the desire to yet another, this should be a major red flag in your decisions.
You're about, Dan, are you about ready to wrap it up?
I'm just about ready. I just wanted to say I appreciate your time. I do consider it, I want it to remain as an airport. I think there are possible viable options around the area to meet some Pat's objectives, if they should work, but I don't think this is a good idea. I do, I have a pretty good supporting group of pilots that I know in the Omaha area, and I have failed to find one that thinks this will be an attraction for people outside the local area to go to. Thank you very much. You go, go ahead.
Do you know what the volume of aircraft is at the North Omaha Airport?
Yes, sir, I do. Right now, I can tell you that there is absolutely zero, unless Mark maybe flies out of his house and some of the other people that fly out of their houses that are kind of beholden to Pat. Let's see. The North Omaha Airport, well, see, these numbers are kind of skewed. There's no way we can really, they haven't been collected for an extended period of time, and even then, I think they had the helicopters associated with the flight. So there's no real, I can just tell you by looking out my window, there are no planes going in and out on a routine basis at an airport, as there was several years ago. Like I said, basically because there's no services for them. There's no fuel, there's nothing there. I know Pat talks like he wants to improve the airport, but he has failed to lead by example. He has failed to provide the services that pilots routinely need for their aircraft, fuel.
We've covered that already.
Yeah.
But specifically, do you know how much aircraft at Blair Airport?
Millard has 14,150 entrant flights. Blair has 1,800 entrant flights. Wahoo has 4650 entrant flights. Council Bluffs 15,000. Omaha-Epley 20,000. And I think that's all I have. Pardon me? Blair, yes, yes, sir. Yes, Blair, 1,800.
Dan, quick question. How long have you been a pilot?
I've been a pilot for 36 years.
Okay. Estimation, how many airports have you flown into?
I don't know. I, okay.
Five?
Oh, no.
A hundred?
Probably closer to 100, so yes. From everywhere, from Tito Brown, New Jersey, to Denver Centennial, to everywhere in between.
Okay. Obviously, I spoke to you a week and a half ago, and I expressed, I am not an aviator. I, you know, fly commercially whenever I need to. So I'm not an expert on aviation. Out of these 100 airfields, airports that you've flown into, how many of them have some kind of well-established amenity space, not even necessarily hotels, you can include that? I mean, lounges, bars?
I don't know of any that have.
Other accessory, you know, sports, spa?
I have no, I have never seen an airport facility use, cater to what Pat's trying to go to. Most of them focus on what pilots really need. They need someplace to sit and do their flight planning, get weather, do the proper things they need to do, prepare for the next flight, actually relax before they have another flight. If they're waiting for people, most pilots use their planes to go from one destination, spend the night, or spend the day there, do their work for, and then leave. This, it's not a, what, we're going to go there and spend the whole weekend lounging around in an airport? That's very far and few between, if anybody I know. It's more along the lines of, like a business jet travel would do, our business corporate travel would do, not so much like what Pat's explaining.
Okay. If you were at an airport and bad weather came in, delayed your flight several hours, gets too late into the evening, you can't fly out, what usually happens? Are there, are there beds in these facilities?
No, there's always somebody have a courtesy car. Actually, most airports, even in rural parts of Nebraska, have what they call a courtesy car, where they're usually at a, you know, an old police car or something like that, and you're allowed to take those vehicles, you fill them up with fuel and return them in a, in the aviation style of customer service that we all are tuned to, and you return them back in a good state. But there's always something. But there's always something available when you go to an airport. There isn't a facility in town, there isn't a facility that I haven't been to that will hang my airplane in an emergency crisis. If I want to take off in the morning and I need to warm up, preheat the aircraft, even Epley will do that for me. I've had them do it for me. So all these services are available at the local communities, at each one of the airports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
My name's Lawrence Shackman. I live at sixty-five fifteen Stone Throw Drive. I'm more than three hundred feet away, was never notified about this. I'm definitely against this expansion. Concerning the environment, the expansion will increase both noise and air pollution in surrounding areas. I guess even, I've been talking about the number of flights going down. But the Autobahn Society maintains an area just east of the airport which supports a number of different bird species and other wildlife. In addition, nobody knows how much aviation fuel is contained in the soil, which represents a health risk to area residents when it's disturbed, disturbed by construction. Contaminated soil hauled off-site, not properly transported and disposed of in a special landfill endangers the public health. A thorough soil testing program must be done and represents and presented to the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality for their review and approval of any development. Another of my concerns is the newer infrastructure that would be required to support the proposed airport expansion and hotel. Presently, there are no sewer lines connecting the Omaha, to a Omaha Sewerage Treatment Plant or water lines connecting to M U D. It should be the responsible, responsibility of the developer to pay for any of these expansion of systems. If a developer plans to drill a well for potable water, it will impact the water table by lowering it. This results in residents having to drill their wells deeper for their drinking water and other non-potable uses. Residents, if, if the, if that does come to occur, then the, the residents should be compensated for the well being re-drilled. If, if, I can't believe that they would be able to put a, a septic tank system in for this hotel. And that being the case, a sewage balloon would be required to be put in place, and then you'd have to have it covered and have provisions for reducing odors and other pollution. Finally, as dealing with the traffic at sixty-nine Street, the proposed expansion, Highway Thirty-six or McKinley is slated to become a four-way, four-lane highway, they're planning on relocating sixty-nine Street, and I seriously doubt they're going to put a provision in for traffic lights. So you're going to have more problems with people accessing the road either from making a left turn on from Highway Thirty-six. Some other things I guess I found out afterwards is that you went from surface parking to underground parking. The underground parking structure is designed for ninety-one vehicles. This will require exhaust fans large enough to exchange the volume of air contained in the garage. These fans will be running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Additional structures will be required to reduce the noise to acceptable levels for a residential area and will have to be built. Besides the noise, this would increase air pollution to the east of the hotel. Since there's no drawings available for the underground parking, I have no idea how this will affect the garage. The proposal does not mention what happens in the event of a hotel fire or hangar fire. The closest fire hydrant is at the southwest corner of Highway Thirty-six and Sixty-nine Street. If a well is proposed for the use of fire suppression, that introduces the possibility of fighting, fighting a fire with water containing aviation fuel, because the groundwater probably has aviation fuel that has leaked in from the, from the surface. And this, this, this also will draw, the plume of the, of the aviation fuel will be drawn to the east, which will affect the residents in that area. The planning board lists all the waivers required and approvals required by other agencies. Without a complete drawing for the facility, why even consider this proposal until other issues are resolved? I recommend that the planning board reject changes in the zoning and have others agencies sign off prior to giving approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence.
One other quick note. I'm a retired civil engineer, and I retired as a senior engineer estimator for Petey Keywood Sons. So I know a little bit about the underground end of this business. Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Laura Houston. I live at one-three-two-three South Ninety-Eight Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of my mother, Ruth Dokken, who lives at sixty-nine-twenty-four Bennington Road. She's the second house east of specifically where they want to put the Aviation Hotel. Growing up on Bennington Road, we always enjoyed living next to the airport and looked forward to improvements and development in the area. We are in opposition to part of the proposed project, specifically the Aviators Hotel location, being pinned between the runway and the residential area to the east. The Lanfears House, who spoke first. It seems more appropriate for commercial development with public access to be along Seventy-Second Street and to have passive use adjacent to the residential parts of the property. The access to the Aviators Hotel is currently shown on Bennington Road, which is paved but pretty underdeveloped residential road with no curbs or sidewalks. We have concerns regarding the design of the one thousand two hundred foot long building, how it looks, the fire truck access to the back of the building, and also the water supply to the building for all the guest bathrooms and fire suppression system. Most of the properties are on well water, like we've discussed, and we have projects that, or we have concerns that the project is insufficiently supplied for, for those plumbing uses, so. Short and sweet. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Laura. Any other opponents?
I live at one-two-five-zero-five North Eighty-four Street, which is about a mile from the airport. I'm actually here, though, representing my parents, Kurt and Linda Hofer. So you get the, the younger, thinner, and less charismatic Hofer.
The better-looking Hofer.
Oh, thank you. So I'll just read the letter, though, that Kurt asked me to share. So he said, "Good afternoon. Linda and I are in Mississippi today, but have asked our comments to be entered into the record for feedback on the North Omaha Airport redevelopment plan. For starters, our family welcomes Pat Ackerman to the neighborhood, the Cunningham Lake area and the Ponca Hills community. We are glad that someone has taken interest in improving the current conditions of the private airport. We also freely acknowledge that the airport was in existence and operating as a private airport long before we purchased the adjacent property, the five hundred and sixty-nine acres of ground across the street, and this is known as the Long Island Lake property. We have attended the public input meetings offered by Pat Ackerman, and we've asked specific questions in the public forum. On the specific questions centered on three areas. Number one, the current zoning that has been granted for only the airport property. Number two, the hundreds of specific airspace violations that currently exist on or within the airport property being redeveloped and potential violations in the surrounding area on the property that Pat Ackerman does not currently own. Pat Ackerman has not negotiated easement rights on those property owners to mitigate those potential violations. And number three, since the owner has not negotiated these easements and airspace rights privately, he has threatened the enforcement of the potential violations by using the city's zoning code. It is Pat Ackerman's expectation that the city will be, is going to be the enforcer of these potential violations, and we are not clear on how our property violations, our property has violations on them given our current agriculture zoning. So number one, the current airport is in violation of the city's airport zoning regulations, which requires one thousand feet on either side of the runway. The current property is not nearly big enough to meet the city's own regulations now or in the future. And so while we think it's fair to live with the airport as it sits today because of decisions in the past, it does not seem equitable to significantly exacerbate those violations by adding more traffic and flights to the airport that exists with many current violations. Furthermore, the additional development requests result in more violations of the city's current airport zoning clear space. The airport has violations of, the airport has violations of the city's one thousand foot width and of the FAA's clear space requirements. The owner has said he's attempting to meet the FAA clear space standards. And to be clear, the FAA has no authority to enforce any violations or remove those. Furthermore, it's typically addressed through the acquisition of easements or neighboring properties. However, Pat Ackerman's acknowledged that since he's a private airport right now, he does not have the, any condemnation authority, so he will not be seeking any easements, but will rely on the city. And the city's thousand-foot violation would prohibit his development in addition to any trees or adjacent violations for one thousand feet, and he's requested the city to enforce, enforce these violations, enforce the correction of these violations. And what he is proposing as a development violates the city's current code, and so he's asking for an exception on that, but at the same time, he is wanting the city to enforce cutting down trees on our property, and we just, we don't think that that's fair. Furthermore, the owner, or Pat Ackerman, has expressed a desire publicly to move from a private airport to a public airport, as we've discussed, and it's my understanding that this has the potential to greatly increase the flight count up to, you know, I think his goals are to reach a similar volumes to the Millard Airport, but he only has, you know, ten percent of the amount of land area and buffer space as the Millard Airport. So we, we don't think that that's safe, and he is wanting to, I'll skip down here, given the length of time that we've had. Yeah, so then Kurt was saying that he met in the meetings with, the public meetings with Pat that he held, and he asked specifically how was Pat going to address the, the violations? And then he deferred to the, his legal counsel, who told us, he said, "Honestly, we do not have the right to enforce compliance on the existing violations other than, or other property owners have on their property, because private airspace easements and private agreements on those properties have not been negotiated." So the owner's going to rely on the city to enforce compliance to the current violations, and so if you don't work with us on the airport voluntarily, you will get a government-sized bill from the city when they come out and enforce what is currently infringing on the airspace. We're going to be counting on the city to do that. And in our case, our property has roughly half-mile frontage on the other side of Seventy-Second Street, which is where all of our, our trees are located. So lastly, we want to, assurances from the city that if the expansion is approved, that the city will not be a private party enforcer on some issues and not others. There are many current buildings on the property that do not meet the city's zoning regulations, and many buildings that enter into the airspace that the city has approved building permits for, and is the city going to push to have those removed? And how can the city approve a new project that violates the current airspace and at the same time enforce violations on our property that, as well? So bottom line, we're not opposed to the airport continuing to operate as a local airport, but we do not support targeting volumes similar to Millard Airport and enforcing tree violations on our property unless these questions can be answered. So we request that gets laid over.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Andrew Collins, Erickson Cedars from law firm, one-zero-three-three-zero, Regency Parkway Drive. I represent the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department, who has a property immediately to the north of the North Omaha Airport. We're here in opposition to the, the proposal and the application in general. This board already knows that what it's exercising in, when it uses its zoning authority is the police power, which has to be exercised in furtherance of the public welfare. In order to promote public health, safety, and general welfare of the city and its jurisdiction, one of its obligations under the ordinance is to encourage compatibility of adjacent land uses. And what I hear in this application is a private party owning private land, asking the, for a rezoning in order to facilitate making that private land and the businesses operated there on profitable, at the expense of and notwithstanding all the consequences and ramifications to the neighboring parcels that we've heard described today, from environmental to traffic, to the attendant noise, to the safety issues, and, and everything that, that is wrapped up in all of those. That being said, the airport, sorry, the, the fire department's primary concern is operational. The applicant has indicated that this change will not affect the size or characteristics of the airplanes that land here, and that there will be no change to the RPZ. We think this application ought to be denied, or at minimum laid over at this time. Failing either of those, we would request that this board require that the applicant comply with a condition, that there be no change to the RPZ and no change to the character of airplanes based on the impact that those would have on the surrounding properties. Based on my research, I believe that the applicant would have to come back here before changing the RPZ. In order to, to change the RPZ, the applicant would have to move the threshold of the runway, which is not a consideration here. You, you ask the obvious question, there's lots of changes in the offing, and what's going to become of those plans the next time around is, is a fair question that my client has. But again, setting that aside, I just ask that the applicant agree that the RPZ is going to stay where it is, or at minimum that, that the applicant be required to come back here if there's any plan to move the RPZ.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other opponents?
I'm Stephen Scherr, the first S.T.E.P.H.E.N., S.C.H.E.R.R. I live at sixty-nine thirty-four North, and drive just a mile north of the, north into the proposed extension of the airport. I represent myself and my wife, Jan. You've already heard from me, I've written to the commission a couple times, and I would just like to summarize my position in opposition to the airport, asking whether it makes sense or whether it's good policy to take an airport created in nineteen forty-five in an area entirely agricultural and to convert it to something which obviously will expand and extend its use in an area which is almost entirely residential now. It's residential to the north where we are, to the, to the east, and to the south, and of course, the land to the west is already platted presumably for more residential housing. So for these reasons, in a general way, in a general conclusion, we ask that you deny the application as it stands now, based on those general considerations of the conversion that it, that it involves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Is that it? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Doug or Patrick, did you want to come up? Doug, I've noticed you've been keeping notes, and I think you've been keeping notes, but...
I should have learned that.
There's a lot of, a lot of issues, a lot of things that you guys address however much you want, but there's a lot of issues out there, so.
Yes, I'll start. Mark Lapuza, one-zero-two-five-zero, Regency Circle. I'm the attorney on this project, and I, I will say that I, I think I was very accurately quoted from that neighborhood meeting. I've never had anybody not put words in my mouth in one of those things. So that's exactly what was said when people asked about violations that are... So that's exactly what was said when people asked about violations that are off of the airport property, is that we identified that, that in Nebraska for this airport, the zoning commission is the airport zoning authority for this airport. And as the city has informed us before, they act on a, respond on a complaint basis. They don't attempt to be proactive and go out and identify violations that may exist in violation of the RPZ or other requirements. Previous airport owners may not have cared about those issues, but to the extent that those might hamper future development, we do expect that the city of Omaha will be made aware of zoning violations. If there are variances or other requirements that may be asked, that's why this board and the ZBA exist. For example, we're here asking for a variance with respect to the 1,000-foot setback. And it's been identified that the 1,000-foot setback from the airfield would prevent any reasonable development. And the planning department has suggested that a variance is proper there. Any other owner that asks for a variance, this, this board or the zoning board of appeals would be able to consider. And so we really think that in considering, as, as was noted earlier, the impact of a project like this interacting with an urban environment, it's the job of this board to try to balance those things. And so we've, we've in our meetings with the city, I don't think we've heard anything from the city that's, that's taken a position that the city can't or won't enforce these things to the extent that they're a matter of safety. And so we look forward to continuing to work, work with the city in that regard.
Mark, we've also not made any commitment regarding the violations. And yes, we look forward to continuing conversations on that, but I just want to make that clear.
That's, I, I hope I didn't represent anything other than that. We have not identified any specific item that we have said, we can't move forward unless this is done, or that is done, or this person is notified. And, and we expect, again, these are things that, as was noted, we as the airport owner have no ability to enforce these things. We can't go onto anybody's property and chop down an unsafe tree. The city can identify whether or not that needs to be done. And, and that is, that is all that we would ask.
To Jeff's point, if, if something on their property was in violation, I mean, trees or whatever, then it's their responsibility to take them down?
Yes, so in the way that the, the current code is written and the, the runway protection zones, those would be zoning violations. And they would, like any other property use zoning violation, the city would be able to identify the, if they so choose, the city would be able to identify to the owner that there was a violation, ask for it to be corrected. And ultimately, the city would have the ability, just like they would on a weed notice and mowing an overgrown lot, to come act on that property. Now, it's our intention with respect to these items that if there's anything that needs to be done, for example, a tree that needs to be cut down that's in violation of airspace requirements, the first thing we would do is what any neighbor ought to do, which is reach out to the owner directly and say, we think this is a problem. And I know that in the past, Pat has offered, this is a problem and we as the airport will take care of this for you free of charge. We'll trim that tree, cut down that tree, find a solution with respect to this. That's the neighborly thing to do, and that is certainly the first and, and hopefully only action that will be taken on some of these items. If anybody says, I don't care about you, I don't care about airport safety, I'm not cutting down my tree, I think that's when the city then needs to get involved. And the city can decide whether that safety issue is something they want to look at or not. But when the, when the Omaha City Code creates the planning board as the, as the airport zoning commission, that's, that's where that goes.
So is that, is the, is Mr. Hope's property that we referred to, are they currently in violation of any codes?
Regardless of where this project proceeds or not, those are still identified violations. And no part of this project, as we're presenting, would, would change any of that. Because again, we're not changing the dimensions of the runway. So those are violations that existed six months ago, or a year ago, or 10 years ago, or will exist next week, whether or not this project proceeds.
So if that's the case, why weren't the violations taken care of back then? Or was it, was it only because this was brought to light now with the new airport expansion that, that it's been?
Excellent question. I think that's because you have a new owner that cares. I think the previous owner was identified as someone that really didn't care about some of these things as long as they could proceed with whatever their business model is. And, and maybe it's that they were unaware, maybe it's that they knew and didn't care. I guess I shouldn't cast aspersions. But ultimately, it's a matter of, these have been identified as issues, identified by the state, not by us. And so having those identified as, as issues moving forward with the project and airspace violations that currently exist, that have existed and will continue to exist. You've heard a lot of people talk about safety as though it's an afterthought. The fact of the matter is, the safety is the primary concern of any of this, which is why the runway is being extended, which is why we're talking about violations that may be five years old, is because we care from a safety perspective, particularly if we're going to be looking at new people coming in.
So you, you are determined to, to take care of every violation that exists?
To the extent that we're aware of violations, I think it's only fair that we represent to the owners that we're aware of those violations. And to the extent that those owners are willing to work with us to cooperate with that, we think that makes perfect sense that it shouldn't become the city's problem.
Tell me what you mean by made aware of those violations. That's different than responsible.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example again of a, a encroaching tree to the north of the airport that we're aware of is in technical violation of the RPZ. And maybe planes right now are landing over it, but it's identified as an RPZ violation. Our first step would be to call the owner and say, or, or visit the owner or whatever, and reach out and say, we, we own the airport, this has been identified by the state, not by us, we're not picking on you. This has been identified by the state as an issue. And they've identified a violation, this tree is a foot too tall. Again, I'll use the tree as an example. If the owner were to say, well, thank you for letting me know, we'll trim that tree. Or thank you for letting me know, we were going to cut that tree down anyway. Or hey, could you cut that down? That'd be great. That's certainly the be-all and end-all of it. If the owner were to say, I don't acknowledge the, the report, I don't believe what the state says, I think you're picking on me, or I just don't feel like cutting it down, then that's an issue where the only logical step forward would be to report it to the city. And if the owner has any grounds to, to request any grounds for vi, for variance that they might have from you or from the zoning board of appeals, that's what they're there for. And, and certainly expect that the city would do what we're asking them to do here, which is to consider the balancing of the issues.
Well, it seems like there, at least listening to the testimony, there's quite a few violations, code violations that exist that, that might be borne by the neighbors eventually.
I, I think the, I don't want to say absentee ownership, but the, the lack overs, lack of oversight of those issues, it probably makes that, that, that true, that there's a number of these that at least we're aware of now.
I just wanted to make sure I understand this. If the, if the owner of the tree, since we're talking about trees, the owner of the tree says, yeah, Patrick, you're right, go ahead and cut it down, that's at whose expense?
So thus far, Pat has been offering to do that at his own expense. Again, if the city were to come in, the city would say, chop it down yourself, or if you don't, we'll send somebody out to do it. So far, Patrick's done all of that at his expense, to the extent that there's something else that requires significant expense that, that Pat may want to pay less than the full cost of, of fixing somebody else's code violations. I wouldn't want to promise that every violation ever is going to be taken care of at his expense. But presently to date, that's been the, the conversation that's been had.
Eric, you want to add something?
Well, I was just gonna just state, I mean, Mark, your client knew when they purchased this property that there were a number of violations. So, you know, I just want to put that on the record. Obviously, we're still having conversations regarding the violations and what the city's role is, but I, I did just want to point that out, I mean.
These trees, these trees didn't grow overnight, you're, you're absolutely right. And, and these are violations that pre-existed prior to ownership. The fact of the matter is that I don't know that the, the city of Omaha would identify that as a, an unenforceable zoning violation because somebody else used to live next to it and didn't care about it. To the extent that the city wants to take that position, I think the city has the power to do that. But I think the city can make the determination whether that previous private transaction negates zoning obligations.
Well, you know, you mentioned that the previous owner may have not cared and, you know. I know I brought this up last month. I mean, the previous owner did not protect his interests because he was the one who platted many of the residential lots on the northeast portion. So I, you know, it's, I'm not here with the previous owner, obviously, but, you know, it's, it's very difficult to understand, you know, that mindset and as this has moved along, you know, over the decades and the years and so.
Are you, were you going to address any other items?
I think that's probably everything I plan to present upfront, but I'm still here for any questions that may arise. Doug?
Come on up, Doug. Just a second, Doug. Lars, you can answer this from your seat. Do all the homeowners there, are you on private wells? You're on city water?
We're on, everyone around our areas, our private wells.
Private wells, okay, all right, go ahead. Not everybody. Go ahead, Doug. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, I, I took notes. There's a lot of stuff that I'm a layperson on. I'm going to try to address the engineering-related stuff. Started off, fire issues, how are you going to deal with all of that stuff? Similar to the sanitary thing. At the preliminary plat stage, we don't get that deep into the weeds. We're aware of that, safety being the number one goal to get this airport sustainable and viable. We're going to want to make sure we've got adequate fire protection. As you guys are well aware, we ain't getting a building permit without that happening. Contaminants were brought up numerous times. Same kind of thing, you can conject that people dumped aviation fuel out there all the time, but until you do the soils testing, which will be done as an environmental assessment of the property is done, those issues will be identified. Water well containers are depleted. My recollection is the NRD has a water line system that runs up 72nd from developments I've done in the past up there, back when I had black hair instead of gray. I think that's still up there. Again, that's detailed stuff of how's that going to supply the water to our site? Are we going to use that to augment our firefighting system? I think those things come down the road. Road improvements, financing, there seems to be an attitude that the developer should pay for everything. I know you guys aren't always against that, but in some cases, the project doesn't proceed without some public participation. It's not hard to look at that intersection and go, this ain't one that they use as an example in teaching civil engineering up there with McKinley and 72nd Street and Bennington Road having that strange geometry. Zoning codes, I think I'm going to skip over that one, that's more Eric's bailiwick. But I think Pat's a pilot that's, that's just gotten his license and I think all of us can remember being very enthused about things at a younger age. He does have a hospitality background. But I think if you wanted to do a hotel, there's a heck of a lot of easier places to do than pick out this site and go do it. I think legitimately he has a passion for flying and he's very enthusiastic about it. Wants to do something different, very knowledgeable about some of the amenities. And I think it's come across as that's more important to him than the aviation thing. But I think if you think about it, if you just got your pilot's license a couple of years ago, you're probably all excited about it. The instrument rating, I think a lot of these airstrips, I don't know that you're going to require that for a small airstrip. I think the size of, of airports, they rattled off all of these, well, if you flew, if you've flown in Chicago, there's a big difference between flying into O'Hare and Midway. Midway feels like you're on the roller coaster and O'Hare, not so much. It would be nice to have a lot of space, but I think over time, development tends to envelope these airports. That's what happened at Denver, they ended up having to build one way out. Same, same thing at Kansas City. There's a point where you have to restrict the type of planes that are being used and so forth. We've extended the runway, or we're, we're proposing to extend the runway entirely for safety purposes. The landing and takeoff spot end up being the same. Like engineers, there's a lot of aviation acronyms. I call it kind of the airspace. There's a prescribed airspace above the airport right now. There's no intent to change any of that. The violations that have been addressed at length, I think we'll get to all of that. All of that improves safety, we want to get rid of as many of those as we can. Pollution from construction activities, again, is there contaminated soil there? Until we know there is, there's some there, we don't know how we're going to deal with it. We'll go through all of that stuff prior to getting the, the building permits. There's concerns about sanitary sewage, there are numerous septic systems up there already. We know they work there, it's just a matter of sizing them into Mr. Pate's earlier comments. How big a system can you get? Does that dictate how many rooms you can deal with? We'll get into that as we get deeper into the, the project and we, and we see that the city has a desire to make this thing happen. Traffic concerns, we hear that about all developments. If there are concerns about that, traffic studies can be done. I can, I can say, and I've said in the public meetings, that intersection ain't the greatest. Something's going to happen there over the years when they expand that highway. The roads need improvement, that's not something you guys have, haven't heard before. We've got a few areas like that around town. The volume of water adequate for all the users, again, if there's an NRD system, we do have plenty of ground to, to store water, if we would necessarily need to do that. I, I think that's it related to the engineering stuff, unless you guys have any other questions.
Doug, there was one comment at least about fire concerns, and I'm sorry if, if maybe you mentioned it and I missed it. Would there be a plan of the applicant for any, what is the plan for firefighting activities, whether it's brush fire, plane crash, whatever else?
Well, I, I think we're going to work with the fire department.
Are you sure they want to work?
Well, frankly, I have to work with them every time. But I think just off the top of my head, I'm going, well, if you got an NRD water source there. As in the old days, you'd fill up cisterns. You guys find some of them once in a while down here. And you have all of that water on site stored to fight fires. And airplane, airplane's a little different, we've heard in the public commentary, there are different fuels and chemicals needed in some cases. I was fortunate or unfortunate enough to be in San Francisco when that jetliner crashed out there probably 10 years ago. There's a big pile of foam and a burnt carcass sitting on the runway when you go to take off. Even as a commercial flyer, that's a little bit unnerving. So we'll work with that to make sure we're complying with all regulations and that people can feel safe going in there. And if something happens, the facilities are there to take care of them. We won't have like Epley where you've got EMTs on standby all the time. But I don't think that's the case with any of the other airstrips either. So that's kind of a long-winded response, did I answer your question?
Thanks.
Board, Pat Ackerman, 11901, North 72nd Street, North Omaha Airport owner. Just a couple of things I wanted to note. One, there was some mention of not offering fuel. I've offered fuel all year long. There's been an issue with the terminal, which is one of the reasons why I need to upgrade it. And so that's been, I had to be there to actually fill it up. So I do want to make sure that was also known as well. There was also mention of IFR coming in. I've flown IFR in there, you, you fly special VFR. You s- you fly special VFR through Epley or Blair. Um, so again, we've talked about approaches out there as well. But until I get commitment of- of a larger project to make the airport sustainable, I can't spend money on things that- that don't work, uh, longer term as well. Um, so those are a couple of things I wanna- I wanted to mention from a flying standpoint. We have a number of aviators. People are actually at the airport using airfield. They're- they're a vibrant community. We fly, we meet, we have conversations. Um, it's not just a couple of neighbors flying. I fly in and out of there at least every other week. Um, and so I've- I've been excited to be out there. I- I love the community, even those in- opposed to this, uh, this project. I- I've enjoyed the conversation, got a chance to meet a lot of people, and I think we have different perspectives. I don't think comparing it, not- not other airports have this kinda thing doesn't mean that it won't work. Because I've heard from a number of pilots that they're very excited about this. And there's other examples out there where this has been successful. Any questions?
Any questions for Patrick?
Let me just make- make one observation. You know, one of the comments was that there's no service available. But that's the point of this project is to be able to add services, to have things to do there and for people to come. And if they are overnighting, something to do there.
Correct, yeah. To- to have services out there, we need activity. And so we have to drive activity. And part of that's the reason why the facility is coming along. Again, the whole goal is to scale into that and- and add layers throughout that to make this a sustainable and growing project. So, thank you.
Hey Patrick.
Yeah.
If, uh, yeah, if, um, if this were to go through and- and you had the five hundred, you know, uh, so- I'll call them social memberships. Uh, and people were coming over to visit and- and use the- the facility, uh, where do they park? Because how many- or how many lot, I mean, right now, you've got underground parking, which I- I would've thought would be for the people that maybe have a- a plane there or- or- or they're gonna use a hotel. But is that where the people would park if they wanted to use the- the upstairs facility, I guess I should say?
Correct, yep, that's correct. And they'll also have plane parking spots as well. And the plans, as you mentioned, there's one building be taken down for plane parking across the way. We also have the hangars there as well. They'll be open for those.
How- how many spots would that be? Do you- do you know right off the top of your head or?
Uh, I don't know the, because again, depends- depends on the dimension of the plane and size. And I know that we have thirty-eight thousand square foot of hanger space planned. Uh, I believe the dimension of the building, uh, I think it's three hundred feet. And so that building gets taken away, there's a bunch of additional planes, parking spots on the other side. So I don't know how many. I'd have to get that information for you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Pat, what would be your desired number of flights a day, a week? It's probably in the submittal, I don't recall.
Yeah, I'd added in the submittal kind of where we were in eighteen, which is the last year of the inspection where the data was submitted to the master record. And it averages around thirty-nine per day. But again, that include the police helicopter, it's in and out, plus, um, plus local traffic as well. Um, and my goal is to get back to thirty-nine. Kind of that thirty-five to forty would be takeoffs and landings per day. So you divide that by two. Um, so you're looking, you know, in that kinda twenty range, fifteen to twenty per day, um, at least initially. You know, again, longer term, I think it could be busier and- and the facility could be supporting that. But, uh, that's why I said it could be as busy as Blair, which is fifty-five takeoffs and landings per day. And Millard is up to sixty-six takeoffs and landings per day per the FAA master record data that's there. I think it's good to at least be open that that could be a possibility if this is really successful, to be open about that. I'm not saying we'll get there and definitely won't be easy and won't be overnight, so.
Any other comments or questions? I was gonna say, as I'm sitting here and listening to everybody and what we were talking in our pre-meeting upstairs, I, Patrick, I don't know you. You're probably the nice guy. But a- at this point, I- I- I just can't support this project. There's so many questions in my mind of how this is gonna work and- and how we're gonna keep the zoning properly. And is it, are we gonna end up with people using it, which the city can't monitor this thing? I worry about, uh, and Doug says, I know we're premature, but building a seventy-six room hotel in the septic system, uh, water contamination, fuel contamination, there are just so many areas here that, um, right now, I just can't, I can't support this. I can see how people flying around might like it, but, uh, from a planning board standpoint and zoning and keeping the zoning and monitoring the zoning, I- I- I just can't support this. At the- at the very best, it would be a layover. And I don't know what that might do, but. Here. I'm back on.
While you're done.
But, uh, I- I just, uh, I just don't see this working properly in the zoning that- that- that you're in, in AV zoning. So for those reasons, I'm- I'm sorry, but I'm- I'm gonna vote for denial of this project.
I appreciate your perspective and appreciate your time considering it.
Mr. Chairman, I- I share your concerns as well. There's so many variables in- in this. And- and again, it, I love the, I love people that are innovative and- and think outside the box and you're doing that with this. But we've heard from a lot of neighbors here and a lot of people that are in opposition to it and the fact that there's some zoning concerns as well. And I'm sure you're gonna get into some explanations too, Eric, with this. There's so many variables in this thing that just don't seem to fit together right and, um, from a lot of different perspectives. So I'm having trouble as well. So I'm kinda like, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum. I'm- I'm conflicted. Uh, I- I can't vote- vote in favor of it. I don't know if I wanna oppose it, but at a minimum, it's a layover for me as well so that we can continue to have dialogues. And even then, I don't even know if that will do any good. I hope it does. You know, communication's the key to answer to a lot of things, right? Uh, but we gotta work out some of these variables that are- that are concerning to me.
I appreciate that. Thank you for considering.
I guess I'd like to comment that, uh, a lot of things that- that are expressed as concerns, as Doug indicated, those are things that are gonna be dealt with. We- they weren't, there will not be a permit unless- unless all those things are met. The state won't allow you to- to put in a septic system that doesn't work. Uh, you'll have to have water. You can't have a building without water. Uh, you have to work out a fire issue. You can't have aviation without a solution to the fire. So that's gonna happen. So those are false- false, uh, dogs right now to- to worry about. If- if it's allowed to go forward, they still have to reach those hurdles. Uh, the things that I don't, I'm not confident of is- is the business plan because, uh, I, it's- it's so novel. I mean, it's intriguing. I think it's a clever idea. I've had to fly cross-country before and I can see how this would be desirable. But, you know, the business plan is not, we're not here to critique the business plan. That's his job and it is bankers to figure that out. Uh, the- the other side of it is, is the- the, uh, violations. I don't know what the extent of those violations are, but he seems to represent that those violations will be met. And if he can't meet them, then the- the- the business won't succeed in that regard. Uh, so I- I can see the point of maybe another, I hate to see it again, four months in a row or three months in a row to do a labor, layover. But if that would resolve some of the issues, but, uh, I am, I would not deny at this point.
I'm just worried about how this would be bad, you know, putting the train on track. I guess getting that airplane in the air and then trying to land it. You know, once we get it up there, we gotta land it and maybe it's better that it doesn't take off. I understand all the issues will be, would be resolved 'cause you couldn't get a building permit unless you had proper septic and all that. But once this thing gets moving, um, I- I- I don't think we're gonna be able to stop. And Patrick's gonna end up with a lot of money into this thing. Those are. And, and, yeah, the zoning, I don't know if we can ever, I- I'm worried that we can never make this thing comply with the AV zoning. I- I- I just, when we were talking about return on investment and- and I know that's not ours, but the zoning part of it is ours. And if you're bringing in outside people with, that aren't associated with aviation in order to pay the bills for the hotel and the restaurant and everything, now we're in, you know, we're in huge conflict with our zoning. So I- I just, uh, I, that's where I'm at.
Just share really quickly, I'm also gonna vote to deny the project. At minimum, I'll support a layover. Um, I think you have an incredible concept. I think it's exciting and energizing. It seems like a really cool amenity for the community, uh, that you're a part of and represent. Stay encouraged, find another path forward. You can work with Eric and the planning staff to, uh, to- to find that path. Um, and hopefully we'll see you again with something that we feel really comfortable supporting. I think there are too many variables at this point, uh, that I agree I- I can't support. But I think your concept sounds incredible, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else before we hear from Eric or?
I would not support, I mean, I echo everything, I would not support a layover. I'm really only leaning towards denial. I want that, I want you to be successful and your airport to be successful. But with corrupt questions surrounding zoning and, um, violation of safety, I- I would much rather ease into this and, you know, kinda phase it out and see what works rather than just throw all of this together. And I don't wanna waste your time. I don't wanna waste the planning staff's time.
Thank you.
I would also support a layover. I just wanna put that up. I'm not quite ready to deny. I think I'd like to give this some legs and some time and further communication, but I just wanted to kinda state that I would be in support of a layover.
Jeff, did you have anything?
Concept is cool. Uh, I- I really worry about a full-service bar restaurant. You have to get money somewhere. I get that to make the project success- successful. But I'm worried about those people that have an- have an interest in aviation, just being able to come in and use the facility. I- I- I think that's what's gonna have to, you're- you're gonna have to get those members to support the whole project. I mean, you'll have some of the- the pilots that'll do that certainly. But I'm worried about that becoming a neighborhood bar or that becoming a neighborhood restaurant. Hey, Fridays, we have Taco Friday or whatever, you know? And- and just because you have an interest in aviation, I mean, I have an interest. I- I like to, I like to get on a plane and fly, but, you know, I don't know that that should be the criteria that is a membership. I mean, how- how do you prove it, you know? Maybe I don't have an interest, but I- I need the dues. So, uh, I'm- I'm really worried about that large of a- of a project of that, that part of the project, I guess I should say. So I- I don't know. I'm not, I'm not in denial. I'm- I'm more leaning towards a layover, but I would, I would really have to see something that would probably shrink down your project, which I know we've done and you've worked with the city. But it- it does worry me. And, uh, and I mean, there might be neighbors that wanna use it, but, you know, there's also neighbors that don't and they also have safety concerns as well. So, uh, that's where I stand on it right now. And I- I appreciate your time and you've been very good to work with, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yeah, you know, obviously, we've talked about a lot of items and I've asked questions and jumped in as well. So I'm not, I'm not gonna belabor a lot of the points. Uh, you know, I, I- I did wanna make just a few comments, you know, regarding alcohol license. That's not something the planning department or even the city of Omaha issues. I mean, there's a city, uh, there's an alcohol application that goes to city council and they make a recommendation to the state liquor commission. So, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there, um, you know, for what that's worth. You know, I, we've had concerns as staff of just making sure that these, you know, Kathy brought it up in our recommendation report, talks about it. And we've talked about it for months, is, you know, making sure these commercial uses are accessory to the airport. And that's, it's clearly written in the zoning code. Now unfortunately, there's many parts of the AV regulations that, you know, aren't necessarily as- as clear. But, you know, it's, it, this is the challenge of- of the AV zoning and the- and the commercial component. And, and, you know, add on top of this, this is Northern Hills Environment Overlay District. And so you wouldn't typically have commercial uses allowed in this area as you're north and east of Bennington Road and Seventy Second Street. Um, that's kind of the edge of the North Hills Overlay District. And, and so, you know, but you have this unique aviation that does allow these commercial uses accessory. So there- there's always concern, um, on our end about making sure that, you know, people that are utilizing the Aviator Hotel or the other facilities are really tied to the airport and the usage of that airport. Um, so we had some condition that strengthened it. But I heard a lot of things just from the applicant today that, you know, things I hadn't even been aware of about the specifics of the membership and the numbers and the price point. Like, we don't, we, that was new to me. And so I feel like I just even have more questions and it's always a- a moving target. So, you know, I- I'm not really, I stand here, we have this recommendation for approval, but I'm- I'm not really, you know, comfortable just based on some of that new information. And, you know, a general interest in aviation, that's not, that's not what we're looking for to being acceptable for who can use this facility. And so, um, I don't have much more than that unless you want me to expand on anything else. Well, what specifically on the zoning?
In your report, there's several zoning issues that need to be addressed.
Well, yeah, so I mentioned this in the past. Um, our zoning code is extremely strict regarding the distances from a runway. You know, it's basically a thousand feet on each side of the runway that can't have anything taller than the runway. Well, look at this. There's homes that you all live in. There's, you know, there's hanger buildings, there's facilities and, and, you know, this, you know, this site has evolved over the past seventy years, seventy-plus years. And, you know, so I can't speak to everything that was done in the past. And yes, there are certain, um, zoning waivers that have been approved in the past. And we talk about, you know, supporting waivers for the new improvements. But, you know, just looking at it from the zoning perspective, you're never gonna be in compliance of that thousand feet. And so, you know, whether that's an unrealistic distance, I believe it was probably set up in the code to- to account for Epley Airfield, you know, without knowing the exact history of that dimension. You know, the state and the FAA is- is a much smaller distance. So perhaps that's something we need to look at in our zoning code. But, um, regarding the violations, that's something, you know, if this proceeds, we're gonna have to continue to work with the applicant. I'm not, uh, denying that. We also have not acknowledged the specific city's role because that involves conversations with law department and other departments, you know? And frankly, we hadn't got to that and we didn't, you know, even really touch on that aspect in the report. And maybe moving forward, we need to.
So then Eric would the.
It's a little disingenuous though for us to talk about a thousand feet when we approve subdivision within that thousand feet.
Yeah, but that's the truth though.
But it- it doesn't move the subdivision. It- it is where it is.
So, so Eric, would a layover create a sufficient opportunity to address all the items that need to be addressed for us to take this up later? Are you still gonna recommend approval?
Like I said, I just, new items that came up, I- I don't think I'm, you know, and Dave or whoever else could jump in. But, you know, I don't feel comfortable necessarily moving forward with an approval at this time.
Are you comfortable with a layover?
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me like this, the- the biggest concern I see from- from the city perspective is- is this use of that facility. And, and I don't know if there's a, um, a way we could, you know, put some gates around that somehow. I don't know. I don't know that we've explored that.
What do you mean? The city's not preventing the airport from being used as an airport right now.
It's a, it's an aviation community, you know, uh, interest. And that's, that's way too broad. If there's a mech- if there's a mechanism of- of how those people qualify and that they have to qualify by a certain methodology, uh, maybe that resolves that issue.
Yeah, I mean that.
It can't be something we have to police, obviously, 'cause we- we just can't do that.
Well, and that's a concern. And, you know, I- I think I brought up the scenario, um, in the pre-meeting. If, you know, there's mention of a, like a flight simulator. I said, oh, that sounds cool. You know, maybe in six guy, six of my guy friends, like, hey, we have expressed interest in aviation and flight simulator. I've always wanted to do that. That sounds really cool. Like, you know, so am I and my six friends able to go utilize the facility? And I- I just think there's, there's too many uncertainties, uncertainties right now and what the city and the planning department views as being acceptable versus what the applicant is seeking.
It just seems to me like, like when, your name, your young man, Matt, was your name?
Uh, Patrick.
Yeah, Patrick, I'm sorry. You know what? I just listened to what he was saying and I was thinking about that, about bringing young people there and- and letting, you know, I mean, they could probably fly the plane. The way they are with- with- with games and stuff like that. But, but that certainly would- would be an attractive thing. And, and so if you make the membership, uh, rules stiff enough so that they have to buy a one-year membership to start. So you can't have just somebody come in and pay ten dollars for the night like they do at a- at a club bar in- in Kansas. I think then, then you start eliminating those- those concerns that you have.
Well, then it's up to him because you're gonna need the membership in order to pay for it.
Right, and so if you, yeah.
I just see it, it becomes a nightmare for the zoning to- to keep this as. I just see it, it becomes a nightmare for the zoning to, to keep this as the AV zoning. I mean, our job as a planning board is to protect zoning rights.
We, we do, we do operational statements all the time.
Yes.
The businesses have to just.
But we're looking at an airport here versus, you know, can we put a basketball court in somebody's backyard? You know, this is an airport and we got safety issues and everything else. And I don't know how we're going to police that not becoming a, like Eric just said, Eric decides to go up there with six of his buddies and get in the flight simulator. Now, now all of a sudden it's turned into a commercial operation.
Can I make a comment just real quick on, on your comment?
Go ahead, go ahead, Patrick.
So, so this is great. Again, I think part of this is, is a dialogue around somewhat a future of aviation, because again, I know this is novel. It's not, it's not, it's not out there in, in, in every airport that you've gone to, but this is the direction that aviation is going. We need to inspire the next generation of people. If Eric has a general interest of, of aviation, I welcome him to come out to North Omaha and learn how to fly it. Love to get him in a simulator to see what it's about because that's part of what we're doing here. It's the portion to get people to fly more to create safety for pilots because they're flying to a place that they have fun. But it's also inspiring the next generation of aviation. And it's not always just sterile buildings and concrete and, and hangars. It's got to be more than that to, to inspire the next generation.
I guess I would just add, it has, I don't feel like it has ever been presented to us that this is the spot for the, you know, to, you know, to bring a renewed interest to aviation. I, you know, I, I mean, I, I know you've talked about, you know, gaining interest and obvi, obviously for your business model, but I, you know, to, to state in, in how it applies to this specific site. I mean, obviously we're looking at this site. I, I just, I don't know.
The one comment I'd like to add is.
Doug, if, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you go ahead and add it if it's, we've talked this to death here, but if you've got an important.
It's going to be brief.
Okay, we need your name and address again, Doug.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road. We have two use permits on this thing. And use permits in controversial uses, you guys have dealt with those numerous times. You spell out all of that stuff. If you don't do what's in that use permit, you jerk the permit and they're out of business.
I think this is going to be a difficult area to police to say, you know, how, how do we know when Eric shows up with his six buddies up there? And it's just going to be, turn into a commercial operation. I, I'm, we're done.
Thank you, thank you all. I do appreciate it.
So, alright, I'm going to close off all discussion on it. Eric, did you want to?
I guess I would say at this time, the city recommends layover.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
No. Yes. Yes. Layover. Oh, yes. More? Yes. More? No. No.
Four to three for a layover. Okay. Doug, I apologize if I catch you short, but, okay.
Okay, we, uh, the second we haven't, we got work to do here. Do we have a motion on the pre-meeting minutes and the public meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the pre-meeting minutes and, and the meeting minutes for January.
We have a motion in a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion in a second. Debbie, please record the vote. Yes.